Good evening and welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And the recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, thank you for joining us tonight. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen, Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I am here and we are all, all here this evening. Thank you, City Clerk Dean. Right, so we now move on to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second it.
Moved by Councilwoman Walton and second by Councilwoman Washington. Is there any discussion?
Just to make sure, this is just the approval of the workshop agenda?
Yes, it is. We will do the late, the other one later. Okay. Hearing no additions. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Okay, the agenda is approved. So tonight, there are three topics that are on our agenda and our Budget Manager Jenna Walker will provide an overview so that we can brief you on each topic. We have set some time limits so that we can kind of get through all three of them and then we will actually be, have further discussions with each one of those during our council meeting, starting at seven P M. So the first one is A B twenty-three dash one-two-three, Property Tax Levy Ordinance and A B twenty-three dash one-twenty-four Increase Ordinance Discussion. So Jenna Walker, would you please take it over?
Manager. Oh, manager. Our first item today is property taxes. And this is an old presentation, so those of you who have sat through this before, you'll probably know what we're going next, but I'm just going to run through it so we all are on the same page with property taxes. Basics of property taxes, Washington state runs things on a budget-based property tax system, which means that we set the dollar levy for our city for, based on our budget. With a few limitations and then the rates are established based on the appraised value. So there are some limitations, as we said, most significant being allowable increase percentage, Washington has said that at about one percent for inflation, whichever one is lower. And we receive some people from King County that helps us to determine exactly what our allowable increase percentage is. The legally allowable levy limit amount, because the ceiling of the city is falling cannot exceed and allow an increase more than the allowable percentage increase for the rate inflation each year, whichever one is lower, plus an additional amount generated by new construction.
Question.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Sure, could you go just back to the first slide for a quick moment? Just that third bullet point, could you just hit that third bullet point again? Because this is something I think the public at large, like this is something that people really have a hard time getting their minds around. They think it works a different way, so maybe you could just hit that real clearly for us.
Once the total dollar amount is established, the county assesses the city levy rate. So that's based on the trade value of the total city. And that is the rate that each property owner must pay based on the total valuation of this property in the city.
So just be clear, that means regardless of what any person's home assessed value, regardless of how it moves, that's not going to change the amount of property tax the city gets. We first set the dollar amount, which is in bullet two. And then the only thing that's happening with people's assessed values is that's determining who pays what portion of that. But assessed values going up or assessed values going down doesn't change the dollar amount we get at the city. Is that correct?
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, absolutely correct. More value, whether you pay more or less, whatever depends a hundred percent on the appraised value and how it changes in relationship to those. This also, this was enacted due to concerns about property taxes rising faster than inflation, the limitations, one percent limitation. So that is our limit and it is a tricky one for cities that rely heavily as we do on property taxes. We do not have to raise our property taxes to the highest allowable levy limit. We can bank capacity if we choose to do that, which basically means that we would lose the revenue that we would have gotten this year, the one percent. And we, we would never get that amount back, although we can raise future levies up to that limit. But the dollars that we would lose this year, we can't fix that. That would be banked capacity. And we have two property tax actions that we are recommending. There was, there are two agenda bills for this. You know, I should have written them down. I think it's one twenty-four and one twenty-five.
One twenty-three. One twenty-four.
The first is the Increase Ordinance and that increases last year's actual levy amount by seventy-six thousand dollars, eighty-nine percent or point eight-nine percent of what our levy was last year. And then the other action we need to take is to certify regular and excess property taxes to the incoming salesmen's process. So what does that look like in dollar figures? On the left under two thousand and twenty-three, you can see the same numbers that we saw last year. Down to the bottom, the regular levy was eight-point-five-two million. That's where we start this year, in two thousand and twenty-four, that's our beginning point. We raised that point eight-nine percent by seventy-six thousand, which is our maximum allowable limit levy increase this year. We also have new construction. When a new home is built, that does not, it's not part of the one percent, when something is separate. And so we can increase our taxes based on new assessments for new construction. We also have utility value. You can see last year there was no increased utility value. This is an assessment that's done by the state after we have to file our taxes. We have a deadline of November thirtieth and these will come out in December. We don't know what that amount would be last year for zero, but if we don't put a guess in, then it's just property revenue that we, property tax revenue that we lose. So we, we put in a high guess. I believe this is about what we got in twenty-sixteen, when development was happening. And then we will find out how the state assessment of our utilities changes after this moment. So if, if we didn't put anything and there wasn't increase, we would lose the increase. So we put in a guess in it as a placeholder and you think there is an increase. And then finally refunds, people are going to receive refunds and that comes back to us as revenue, separate from that increase. That brings us to our total regular levy.
Councilperson Benson.
Yeah, I'm, I don't understand what utility value means. What, is that an increase in the value of our utilities or what exactly is that?
Yes, I believe it is an increase in the value of our utilities, whether that extends to, you know, power lines and things under the streets. I'm not sure exactly.
Does it have anything to do with improvements to, to, to utilities or anything like that?
I would say that we've made improvements to utilities last year and there was no increase to the, that the state gave us. So I think it's more like.
Did we make good improvements? Okay.
Yes. Yeah.
So you were, this is my understanding and someone please, you know better than me, update me. But if you put in a hole in the neighborhood and you're increasing utilities that
I see.
that connect to those, then you're going to have.
So the ability to get revenue from it, then?
That's a good question. I'd like to.
Okay, right, yes, I didn't know, so it's okay.
So and, and an important point, all of these values are subject to updates from King County Assessor's Office. They give me updates every week and the slide changes, but this, this total levy amount, we believe will capture all those changes. So small subtle changes are expected. This is our best guess.
Councilor Christiansen.
Yeah, can you go back to the last slide? Because I'm a little bit confused and so we're talking about utility value of seventy-eight thousand dollars adding towards our eight-point-seven-million-dollar regular levy. How are we getting the increase of seventy-eight thousand dollars? And this may just be that I'm not tracking it, but so who, who then is contributing the taxes for this increased property value that would then come into the city? Because if it's on our utilities.
Um, I'm, I'm going to read this part of my memo. I'm just going to read it and hopefully that clarifies some things for us. This captures the, the increasing utility value, captures the change in valuation of state-assessing utility infrastructure, meaning tower, gas distribution, cable, telephone, et cetera. So the same has been announced, equal to the increase in the property assessed value multiplied by the current set rate. Given the lack of information regarding this value until after the November thirtieth deadline to pass ordinances, the city has incorporated the seventy-eight thousand amount into the table as an estimate. Um, as we said, it wasn't since twenty-sixteen that we had that amount. Who is paying that? I would assume that cable and telephone perhaps are paying some of that, gas distribution, power, probably. So those are not our city utilities, it sounds like.
Okay.
It's utilities that are servicing our area that are not.
That's fine. Thank you. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. So then if that kicks in in December, but we need to do this in November, does that mean that we're going to be passing a ballpark? Which I'm generally okay with, especially the numbers that we're talking about. I just want to make sure they understand what it is that we'll be doing.
Absolutely. All values in this table are subject to F updates. This is our best estimate. Put it above that we think we will be allowed, because if we put it below, then we lose any revenue.
Dana says she can barely hear you, so if you can lean into the mic a bit.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Yeah, just to kind of help us understand this, based on prior, that seventy-eight K, we don't think that's going to happen. We put that in there just as a protective move. Because if the state were to allow something, we want to have had something there to capture whatever they give us. But based on past practice, that will most likely be zero. Or a number lower than seventy-eight K. In which case, while we pass an ordinance that says we are levying that, state law will actually say, nope, you can't, and that number will just go to zero and the rest of the ordinance stands. So this is just sort of a procedural thing that's going on. But in terms of planning, we don't plan to get that. It would be nice if we did, but we don't plan to get that, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay.
Councilperson Benson.
Is there anything proactively that we can do? Is there an argument to be made for an increase in our utility value that, that we should be making to the state that might get us this extra seventy-eight K? It's a significant amount of money when you consider the minuscule increase that we're getting in our property taxes overall. Um, is there something that we can do? Is there a public works option to, to make a case?
No.
It's a mystery.
Recently, there was a project brought forth to do some telecommunications infrastructure improvement within the city. That will have a positive effect on this number. Aside from starting a cellphone company or a railroad, there's not much public works can do to affect it, but, but those type projects do appear to affect it from one.
What about things like our, like our increased, uh, water?
Water and reclamation.
And sewer are not.
Doesn't count.
These, these are non-governmental utilities.
Okay, alright.
And I do, I do just want to add that this seventy-eight thousand is based on a fifty-million-dollar increase in utility value, which is possible, but that's the high. So the figure that we could give probably wouldn't affect it to the degree that seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Good.
Uh, also in years past, we had an excess, I believe, we had one, where the fires didn't build, build that expired or that was retired in twenty-twenty-two. We currently do not have any excess levy for this year or next year. And in terms of assessed valuation, we get these numbers from the King County Assessor. In two thousand and twenty-three, the city's assessed value, meaning all properties, meaning your tax bill was five billion, four billion. In two thousand and twenty-four, that number is four-point-five billion. And so that works. When property values go up, rates, levy rates go down. When property values go down, levy rates go up. So the levy rate for our city is expected to rise from what it was last year. But that doesn't necessarily mean an increase of property taxes, because properties are correspondingly lower this year.
So.
Councilor Holloway.
That reduction does represent, uh, property coming, basically coming out of the city. Uh, and more important, the Sailor's Lodge coming out, I believe is, that's a pretty significant drop. So I assume the Sailor's Lodge is there. The property tax that the state used to pay, we can, we still collect, it just gets spread across the remaining assessed value of the city, which results in the levy rate going from one-point-five-seven to one-point-nine, in part, and including our other levy rate of eight-nine up above. So when the, when the property goes out of us and goes into trust, our dollar figure of the ta, real estate taxes doesn't change. But it does get spread across the now less number of properties and assessed value. So that's what this is kind of telling you how that mechanics work.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Right, and ju, just to build on that a little, so.
If you're going to correct me. Where'd I go wrong?
Just, just to build on that a little, what, what happens is when the, when properties you know, oversimplify this a little, so correct me if you think I've oversimplified it too much, but when, when properties, um, become owned by the tribe, they come out of the property tax pool. We cannot assess property tax on the tribe. What happens is bef, if, if that property has not gone into trust, what happens is that we then negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes, commonly referred to as pilt. So when you have that occur, the property tax that's now being replaced by a pilt, maybe, I mean, that negotiated, the pilt is a negotiated rate. Uh, but the property tax that was formally being assessed on that property, the council then makes a decision. Do we forego that? Or do we spread it across the remaining property taxpayers? We decided years ago when that property that, uh, Councilmember Holloway was just mentoring, that when that became owned by the tribe, we had that property tax spread across the remaining property tax owners. And then we negotiated a pilt additionally. Now, with this property going into trust, the pilt's gone. The pilt doesn't get respread over anyone. That's just gone. And that's a big number. The pilt's just gone. So I just want to clarify that what Councilmember Holloway said was true, but the, that was something we sort of went through a couple of years ago. The thing that we're facing now, this council is facing, is the pilt is gone and it doesn't get respread, it's just gone. So just wanted to clarify that. I didn't, I didn't get that significantly wrong, did I?
That's good.
Good, okay. And, and just not to put you on the spot, do you happen to know off the top of your head roughly what that pilt number was annually, say, last year, say? Yeah, around a hundred and fifty. Such a big number. When you think about, you know, we're just looking at seventy-five thousand or so as the property tax increases, the maximum, assuming we levy that. You know, a hundred and fifty thousand going away in pilt is a big loss.
So in terms of this seventy-six-thousand-dollar increase, uh, these are the approximate values that a average homeowner would, would pay additionally, based on their assessed value of their home, for a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home. It would be an annual increase, that's just under twelve dollars. And all the way into a one-point-five-million-dollar home, an annual increase of approximately twenty-five. Now, taxes might go up more than that because there are other components. We have to look at some, well, district, county taxes, hospitals, ports. Um, we're not the only one who makes up that, that.
Councilor Johnson.
I think you're, I think you're about to do it. I was going to ask about. Yeah, the dollar bill.
Thank you. For every dollar paid in property taxes, so homey is eighteen cents. And the remainder of that is split up, as we said, King County gets thirteen cents, so homey value, school district gets thirty-two cents, state school fund twenty-six cents, and then other smaller things like libraries, hospital, port, it's ten cents. What do we do with our eighteen cents? The city has partially five cents going to support the police, four cents to support the fire department, three cents for administration, two cents for parks, and four cents for others. So for every dollar that you pay in property taxes, this is how our city is. The big question, everyone wants to know how much in property taxes will I pay next year? It depends. It depends on what other jurisdictions do. It depends on things like our utility value, that comes through. And it also depends on the King County Assessor Office and how much more property value changes in relationship to those jurisdictions. So next steps, uh, today is the public hearing. The first reading of both ordinances and, uh, brief presentation and question time for them. And then in two weeks, if you want to move forward with this, there will be a second reading of the ordinance, brief summary and question time, and then council. Time of high inflation, innovative revenue. From the more imperative that we have this semi-ordinance raise contract.
I just. Councilor Holloway.
Oh, and I'm not proposing this, given the situation we're talking, but I want to make clarification. Um, if we were to forego the property increase, and for simplification, let's just say it's one percent. If we go with that one percent, that one percent in essence gets banked and we could apply it in later years. So the next year, you could do it two percent instead of just one percent. So that adds up. You do lose that between when you bank it and when you execute it, you lose the funds it might have collected during that time period. And any increase you may have applied against it also. So again, it gets more complicated math, but, uh, we've done it once and that I can remember.
Councilor Christiansen.
Uh, I was just wondering, because I know that the number that we're going forward with is point eight-nine. And I'm assuming that we're not able to bank the remaining bit between the point eight-nine to the one percent. So is there a reason why we're going with the point eight-nine as opposed to the other?
King County gives us, uh, what she said a year that basically calculated out for our maximum allowable levy increases, and this year is point eight-nine. So you'll see it change just a little bit every year, depending on, you know, I haven't even dealt into what their calculations go into, but that's given to us.
Okay, so it's just a take or leave at a point eight-nine. Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I think I remember a few years ago, the number was, was over one percent by a little bit. It was like, you know, one-point-one-three percent or something. So have we used that bank, that banked amount from the one time we didn't do it or?
Uh, the answer is yes, but that wasn't, it was more like one point, oh, one-point-eight, something like that. It was by the time we picked up that bank in, in later years.
Okay, so we did use that up.
Yeah, we did use that up. I'm not aware of any bank.
In the bank.
Right. Yeah.
We did. So council, we will have more discussion on this in the, during the council meeting. Do you want to move on now to the ERP system implementation discussion? Be twenty-three dash, okay, one-three-two? So is our Budget Manager Jenna, will you be discussing as well or was Sarah?
Start and we'll jump in.
So is the, just, just for clarity, I'm sorry. Items two and three have the same A B number. Is that correct? Are they the same thing?
Oh.
I'm looking at the, what's that?
Oh, yeah. The ERP is just pulling out of it to discuss that and then, but it's still combined in the minute. But I can talk, budget amendment discussion, so.
Okay, ERP, um, we need to make some updates from the packet that was released last Thursday. So you can have a completed packet on ERP and the amendment. And the ERP segment in the memo. I mean, I'm basically walking us through this memo, looks like this life of project. Okay, so ERP was originally part of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one biennium. That is when we started, uh, contact with Tyler. That involved so the software and the service fees, that fee, and the implementation portion. Two-point-one-million-dollar contract, A B twenty-one sixty-nine. And that was the start of our ERP program. We are currently in active implementation right now. We went live earlier in September with a portion of this ERP. And we expect by the end of the year, we'll start to be able to. So it's a three-biennium project. It's, it's complex. Um, we'll just move through it bit by bit and hopefully it's tangible in the future. So this budget that I have, yes, it's started by some project budget, it's the first one. And in two thousand and twenty-two, I didn't know, I had one of the five, we needed to, I would say, determine that the total like for this implementation, we need the one-point-eight million. And
The screen.
What is happening, software fees.
It's like a back page here.
I'm sorry, I want to verify.
Which page?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm completely lost. Can you, can you just back up one second? Oh, I, I was lost on once, when you quoted the agenda bill that we passed.
So
It looks like you got to the back of the first page.
The back of, okay.
Yeah.
That's why I can't find, thank you.
Okay. So, agenda bill, twenty-one sixty-nine, signed a contract with Tyler Munis to implement the R E R P system. And that was a two-point-one-million-dollar contract, which included five years of SaaS fees, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand for five years, as well as implementation costs, um, totaling somewhere around a million dollars, maybe just under a million dollars. And then after that contract was signed, we quickly entered into a new biennium, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. And we, and, um, council determined, oh, no. Sorry, it's same biennium. It's the same biennium. But council determined that a one-point-eight-million-dollar budget for the implementation of this project would be appropriate. And part of that is implementation fees within the Tyler contract. It also included some fees for employees, for a project manager. There was two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars in contingencies and then also two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in project management services. So if you're looking at this, um, this current life of project budget, you will see that one-point-eight-million dollars. That is where we started with the budget for the implementation. If you go down farther, you'll see the total SaaS fees of one-point-two million. You'll see some added SocraDA SaaS fees of forty-seven thousand for total SaaS of one-point-three million. This is operational, so this is not part of the implementation. And then in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennium, we added a few more things to this ERP project. We added some funds to implement SocraDA and Intergov, which are, um, clarity in government finances and also V N O taxes and permitting software. And then we also added a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in temporary labor. That leaves us with a total, grand total, life of project budget of three-point-three, three-point-four million. Our expected life of project budget is based on what we actually spent in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, what we expect to spend in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, and then also the, the final years, two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. What we expect to spend in twenty twenty three, twenty four, and then also the the final years, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. As you can see, um, the increase is very slight. It's a thousand dollars more than what we originally expected to spend. Um, but that's, that's more. There are ups and downs, I will say in this. So let me go to the next one and I can show you why. Why we're off. We did not budget for taxes on SaaS, which totaled a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We would anticipate a new Tyler SaaS contract in the final quarter of twenty twenty six for approximately sixty six thousand.
What does SaaS stand for?
Software as a service. So those are our ongoing operating fees just to run this program every year. Um, in our implementation, a slight increase because we needed cashiering stations. We are increasing the labor costs. Um, a great deal of that happened during this. Twenty twenty three, we had some temporary labor supporting our finance department as they worked to implement this. Project management represents a savings. We had a contract with Barry Dunn. And it didn't provide the value that we were expecting from it. So we ended that contract early and had some savings there, which we were able to apply to some of the overages. And then we have Socra T, Intergov, um, those are also. Representing some savings. We have determined that Intergov, it's more than we budgeted when we were making the biennial budget. For this year and next year, and it just, it seems like we have some better options. So we're exploring. Um, some of the modules that we already have with Tyler or Laserfish to see if those would better suit it.
Councillor Christensen.
Yeah, so my question just relates to that. So we've identified the cost savings of a hundred and four thousand dollars total, right? And so is it actually a cost savings or is it not really because we're not going with the original contractor where we're still going to have to find? The funding to provide whatever the services that we've cut. So, so is it?
It's a great question. We have two potential options that we're trying to make work within the software that we already have. So our hope is that it would be no additional cost.
Okay.
Uh, that's not guaranteed. We're learning things as we go along, so we'll find out. But we have two, two options to explore.
Um, staff are saturated right now with what we have. So adding additional software at this time is gonna, we're gonna be paying for it and not be using it. Because we don't have, they don't have the bandwidth to absorb anymore. There are ways to do those functions in what we have purchased. So instead of having a fancy module for B and O taxes. Staff calculates them and they put them out as accounts receivable. Um, and it all goes into Tyler. It's all transparent. It's all accounted for. It's just we're not spending a bunch more money for software that staff can't learn, can't set up, can't use right now. Because their heads are still spinning from making the switch. Um, it, this will allow them time to practice and master what they have. At that point, new budget for twenty twenty five, twenty six. We'll look at it again and see which way to go. Laserfish is coming online soon. It also could provide this function. So we want to explore that option to you before we spend this money now.
Thank you. Um, and Laserfish that, um, Director Chambliss mentioned, that is the next one, the enterprise content management. SaaS fees and implementation would total eighty three thousand over the next four years. I believe it's sixteen thousand approximately in ongoing SaaS fees every year. Um, and that's the. Laserfish would potentially allow us to do a lot more than just records, but it's, it's an enterprise content management system. And then finally contingency, we still have some remaining contingency, approximately seventy thousand. We did spend some of it on an irrigation system survey that was necessary for. Asset management, I think. And then also. The other one was Parks and Public Works needed some hardware. And that was purchased with contingency funds. So life of project increased nine hundred and seventy five dollars, but it represents a lot of ups and downs in various areas. Next we have our, this is how we arrived at the expected life of project budget. So if I went back to that initial. Slide, you would see that this three point four million agrees to the expected life of project budget. We have an actual twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. What we spent in the last biennium, we have a forecasted twenty twenty three, twenty four. You can see that the grand total for twenty three, twenty four is one point eight million. We have budgeted one point one five million. Leaving remaining budget required appropriation of six hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and fifty six. And then we also have forecasted for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. You can see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining in that Tyler contract. That we are expecting to spend in that final biennium. So that appropriation is basically, this is a microcosm of that longer. Sheet that you just saw, some ups and downs on different things. You see taxes as were mentioned, so some Socra T, enterprise management, that's the SaaS. So this sixty six thousand is an operating expense. That we need increased appropriation and these remaining ones, um, would be part of the. Implementation budget. So if you add up the SaaS with these, you come up, um, with these. Non-operating, you come up with six hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and fifty six. And, um. Per discussion with F and A committee, we wanted to combine this into a new fund. A capital fund, Fund Three Fifty, which would be for the ERP project implementation. And we've, um, increased the appropriation right here. To include all aspects of the Tyler contract. It adds a hundred and fifty thousand and that just basically, um. Makes the fund whole. That means that we aren't going, if we, if we do run into a situation where we're running through, where we're. Implementing quicker than expected, we have those funds ready to finish the contract during twenty twenty four. If not, they're waiting there in the, in the fund. For a total appropriation required of eight hundred and twenty three thousand.
Report Tim Holloway.
All right, at the beginning you have a contingency fund of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mm hmm.
You spend about seventy thousand dollars on some modules and new equipment for public works. Leads you to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Are we proposing to take another seventy K out of contingency? To make it a contingency of only seventy K?
So the contingency is life of project. It's not necessarily appropriated in this year. So. I'm probably not answering you correctly, so.
No, because I believe you took the seventy K that we spent in expenses for the new stuff. And you put it down here in a contingency as a savings. So I've spent it twice. So if you've spent the contingency for the things so stated. That's money spent. It's gone. Your contingency is now one forty. And you're claiming in, in the increase in project budget, the last item is a negative to contingency again of about seventy K. So if you take another seventy K out, you're gonna leave yourself with seventy K of contingency. Or my suspicion is this number has carried through inappropriately. As a savings when it was actually an expense for the new module and expense and other stuff. So help me out with that because the numbers exactly match, which makes me.
So I match, I see the seventy here. Which one are you matching it to?
Uh, bottom line on their contingency, other potential uses.
Which, um, which chart is it?
The next page. So here's the condition. Starting to ten.
Mm hmm.
Spend a hundred sixty nine five seventy two.
Mm hmm. Right.
Here's that.
So.
Out of there.
So this is explaining the increase and decrease. So basically it's a summarization of this. It's the, so all of this adds up to nine seventy five, all of this adds up to nine seventy five. I just kind of summarized it so it's easy to see how much relates to what. Project, like we combined labor. We added temporary labor to IT project manager labor to come up with this number. We combined all the Tyler pluses and minuses. Everything with a one up here is a Tyler implementation. We combined all of those to come up with. Five thousand over budget. So these are supposed to agree. It's the exact same number. It's taken from here just to explain the increases and the decreases from the current life of project budget to the expected life of project budget.
This is not. Not necessarily a decrease in contingency.
No, it's not a decrease. It's just. It's just showing our overages and underage, underages, is that a word? Um, that come to our grand total increase in budget. So we're over in some areas, we're under in some areas. We haven't spent all of that contingency. In the life of project budget.
Good, but the life of the project budget since you remain in two ten.
Yes.
No.
No savings down here. You have it here.
But expected life of project budget. Um, what we've spent of the contingency is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So there's seventy thousand of the contingency we haven't spent.
Yeah. Let that go.
Uh, I wouldn't say it's being let go. I didn't want to just combine it. I wanted you to be able to see it.
Councillor Ray, who did you have?
Yeah, let me take a shot at trying to help with this. All right. So if everyone, if you look at the, the chart at the top of. Page two, which is the back of page one. Uh, this is also discussed in the words on page one, but it, it. Being a numbers guy, I like the chart. So. With regard to contingencies, if we go to the bottom of that first section there. There's a row called Tyler Technologies Contingency. And then there's a, a row called Contingency for Other Uses. That's two hundred and fifty one thousand and then two hundred and ten thousand. So that's what was in this thing, four hundred and sixty one thousand dollars of contingency. So what they're saying to us now is, okay. The first of those, the two fifty or the two fifty one, we're just wiping that out. We don't think that's gonna happen. So we're just taking that guy to zero. So in the next column over, you see that guy goes to zero. With regard to contingency for other potential uses, they're saying that two ten, it's not gonna happen. What's gonna happen is a hundred and forty. So they're taking it down by sixty nine. So the sixty nine is appearing down below when they say, okay, we're actually taking down the budget by sixty nine. Now, hey, what happened to the two fifty? The two fifty got consumed by the overages. If you go look up for the first row, for example, professional services, that's over. So you've got some offsets. And then there's a whole bunch of lines with various ins and outs across the three sections. So without getting into all the details, if you go down to the bottom, what they're saying, and here's, so. This is where I'm focusing. Let me see if I got this right. Overall. This project, which is covering three bienniums, correct? Was originally envisioned at three point, let's call it three point four million. In fact, right now, you're telling us this guy's gonna come in at three point four million. Then you're so far, so good?
So good, yes.
Then you're saying now, hey, guys, go to the second to last page. That's one that's headed up appropriation and new ERP project fund. There's two things going on here. One is. There's some accounting going on here. Hey, we're, we're taking this fund. It was kind of hard to follow. It was over in this fund. It was coming out of that fund. Hey, to make this simple, we're putting this whole project into this Fund Three Fifty.
New fund.
Great. Uh, it's. New fund or existing fund?
New fund.
New Fund Three Fifty. So council, you, state auditor, anyone that wants to track what happened here, just go look at three fifty. That's, our counting's gonna be clear on this guy. And when they're saying, okay, so we're moving or pulling stuff in from here and there. And when we went and did that. We found out we kind of had a problem. Here's the problem. In the first biennium. Where we had a bunch of that total three point four million planned to be spent. Some kind of weird disease came along and we didn't spend it. Okay, stuff like that happens all the time. The way we budget, there are other ways cities can budget. The way we budget here. Is we do a biennial budget that does not carry over. What that means is every fund, including the capital funds, have an amount that we've authorized them to spend for those two years. And if they don't spend it. Um, well, if it's in operating funds, it just goes to fund balance. And then we sort of say, hey, what are we gonna do with this fund balance? In the future, we do that. In capital funds, what it means is. Hey, uh, we didn't spend that, which means it's just still there. Right? It was in fund balance to start. We never spent it. It's still sitting there in fund balance. Fine. What they do. Every biennium is they come to us and they say, and they do a complete scrub. They go, hey, where's all our projects that are in progress? Any of these guys that we didn't spend the money yet, we gotta put that in the next biennium. Because the authorization expires. So they say, hey, and they just carry that over for us. It doesn't change the total C I P. It was always in there. Right? Just changes which biennium you spend it in. Makes sense? So what happened here is they're saying we goofed. And it, there's, I'll tell you, it's not like someone was stupid. There's that business I said a minute ago about how it's complex with the funds. It's because of that. But bottom line is. We didn't carry it over. So that's that number six hundred and seventy two thousand you see there. It's part of the whole plan. It just didn't get carried over when we authorized this biennium spending. So the total doesn't change, but their problem is their. Uh, appropriation that we've given them for this biennium is missing the six hundred and seventy two. So what they're doing is they're saying, hey, we gotta put that back. But here's the thing. We took all the projects and we accounted for all the money. In the C I P. So to the kind of question that Councilmember Holloway was asking a minute ago, oops. We didn't realize that we hadn't, that we needed to carry it over. So we went ahead and we applied it to other projects. Oops, we're short. We got a problem. Okay, so that's the six seventy two. And then the second piece they're saying is, and. We're just flat out a hundred and fifty short. Okay, so that's the eight twenty two that you see there. Now, what they're coming to us and they're saying, hey, guys, we need you to give us an additional appropriation of eight twenty two. Not because we're overspending the whole plan, the whole plan's still as it was. Now. We saw on page one, you know, we're not spending on this line. We're spending it this way, not that way. We're, we're instead of hiring an employee to do it, we're doing, you know, there's all kinds of ways they're doing this. But they're getting it done within the same number. So this is just an appropriation problem. So they're saying we need eight hundred and twenty two. The problem is, we don't have any eight twenty two. We already allocated it. Here's what they're saying to us in the bottom of that page. They're saying, guys, we got some good news for you. It turns out that our revenue. Uh, uh, estimates of what was gonna come into the capital funds. Are coming in higher than we thought they would. And there's enough there, eight twenty two to cover this guy. So you don't have to go cut some other project to come up with the eight twenty two. We've got more revenue than we thought we would have. So we actually, we can cover it out of that. So that's what they're trying to tell us on the last page is, yeah, we need you guys to give us eight hundred and twenty two thousand more, eight hundred and twenty three thousand more of spending authority. It's just timing. We screwed up. We didn't carry it over. The total project's still where it needs to be. But we did double count it. So good news, we got additional revenues to cover it. So that's why they're telling us they think it's okay for us to do this. So that's what they're trying. Now, there's just, I, I kind of don't. Like the way they worded it, but look, they're trying to help us understand because we don't actually associate any particular capital. Revenue source with any particular capital spending project. I mean, we do in utilities, but not in non utilities. Okay, so if we're gonna build, you know, a, uh, you know, a new park. You know, and we're doing it with our own funds, or say we're gonna build a water park, spray park, and we're doing it with our own funds. We don't actually say. We don't actually say that came from this particular tax. We just say, hey, there's a bucket of revenues. You know, so that, so, but what they're telling us is, so they kind of worded like I'm gonna use that tax for this thing. That's not quite right, but it's close enough to being right. What they're saying is you got more revenue, so you got this covered. So that's what they're asking us to do here is, and that's why they're saying we don't have to cut anything else. We've got some extra revenues that can cover this.
You just looked at the.
Councillor Johnson.
Put all that together. It's like some.
Excuse me.
Bateman Ozark stuff.
Okay, first of all, everything that Councillor Benson just said also, uh, and it's very important that they break it down for us like this so they don't say, hey, we may, we waved a magic wand and look at that. We have the eight twenty two just on hand. So it's very helpful for us to see that this money actually does exist in a real place. Um, and the other thing I want to make sure that I, that I understood that I'm still not quite clear on was how we get from the about a thousand. Uh, increase in how much it's gonna cost versus the shortfall. I think I got it, but I just wanted to say it to make sure that I got it, is that. What we expected to spend was about a thousand dollars short, uh, which is basically. What we expected to spend was about a thousand dollars short, uh, which is basically dead on. Uh, and then on the, uh, but moving forward, the problem was that we took some of that money that we were going to put toward it, put it toward other projects. Uh, and we had to go back and make up those missing funds, uh, from other places, so we don't have to take it down from other projects. Alright, okay.
Bingo.
Thank you.
Councilor Washington.
Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Mayhew, excellent. Thank you very much for where we lost there. My quote, which. Been hard to do to me. Um, my question, I'm just, um.
You sure to cock up the mic?
Oh. Speaking to the mic here. Just still feeling a little bit uncomfortable with the one fifty, because I really don't know what, what they ask. It sounds like a shortage, but what is it for?
So the one fifty is part of the Tyler contract, and it's included in that very first. Expected, um, expected life of project budget on the very first page. It is part of that number where we say, how much are we going to spend? We're going to spend three point four million. It's on page two, I believe. At this point, my pages are in disarray.
I'm sorry, which line item is it?
So it's part of that professional services Tyler contract, the total amount of eight hundred and fifty three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen. It should be the top line there. That hundred and fifty thousand. Is included within that.
Okay.
But we don't think that we're going to spend it during twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So, but we also don't want to leave a new fund. Empty when we know that we have to spend out of it. So we're making it whole by transferring that as part of this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
You have about two minutes left. Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, so just as a quick clarification then, so when we get to next year's budget. We'll have to reappropriate that hundred and fifty. But we'll be able to look at the fund balance and say, hey, it's there. We put it there before. We just need you to give us the authority, because a new biennium, you gotta tell us we can spend it in this biennium, because we didn't get to spend it in last biennium. But it'll make sense to us then, yeah?
Yes, correct.
By the way, my explanation, anything wrong with that?
Wonderful. My favorite part of this meeting. Thank you. Okay. Now we're on to.
Yeah, but.
I think we need Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, and then we need to wrap this up so we can start our seven o'clock meeting.
They're still didn't answer that sixty nine five, sixty nine whatever was characterized as expenditure for new equipment and modules. I believe that if, if your understanding is correct, your statement's correct, that is an incorrect statement. That is merely a reduction of the overall contingency budget from two ten to one forty. Okay, I would, would have expected to see that that expense for the new equipment and new modules somewhere in here. As an additional expense, I don't see that. I'm still missing that. Uh, so I might, I'll wait, but my. I still need some help with that. Where those additional expenses went?
Those two expenses were, uh, one was approved in twenty twenty two, and one was under the threshold of the fifty thousand dollars and was, uh, approved within by the city. I don't know.
That was, that wasn't my question. So in that chart right there. Those additional expense items are where?
So. I'm gonna go back to, I think, the chart you're talking about. So if you add up the eighty nine thousand and the approximately fifty thousand, you come up with a hundred and forty. So, uh, that contingency. Was spent eighty nine thousand on. Um, hardware for Parks and Public Works and fifty thousand on the irrigation study. So the expected life of project budget is currently a hundred and forty thousand. Those two numbers are represented right there. That doesn't use up our entire contingency, though. There's still some remaining contingency. Which we could apply.
I think.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, or?
Yeah, that guy.
Yeah, Councilor May.
Uh, I proposed, we're gonna, uh, talk about this agenda bill in the regular council meeting. This is the one item. I, I actually, actually, I understood that answer, so, but I think we should just make sure all the council understands it. Maybe we just take this question up when we get to that in the regular. Agenda and go ahead and break now. Would that be okay, Councilmember Holloway?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Alright. So, Council, Councilor Mayhew, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Let's move by Councilor Benson, second by. Councilor Johnson. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed nay? So we are adjourned, and we will start our council meeting in the seven P M.
Right.
Right. It is seven oh one. We just completed a, um, roundtable. Regarding just different workshops on taxes and ERP, and we'll continue our conversation or discussion during this meeting. Um, so council. And everyone is accounted for, so all council members are present. So please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance, and Councilor Christensen, would you please lead? Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Our first item is to approve the agenda. Councilor Mayhew, a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
The, move by Councilor Johnson. My Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Councilors, any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
I'd like to add a second, a second executive session to the end of the agenda.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? I was requested to add it.
Okay. Pressed by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen to add a second executive session to the agenda. Um, Councilor Mayhew?
Uh, just curious what the topic would be? Maybe the city attorney can tell us.
I'm not sure. Real estate.
Make, uh, Hall Holloway was looking for, but.
Will be regarding real estate.
One, oh, seven, okay, yeah.
Regarding real estate.
Uh, it'd be under. Forty two thirty one ten. One. C, I think we said.
Just making up numbers. Prove him wrong, though.
Relation to real estate acquisitions, is that correct?
That is true. So it is forty two dot three zero dot one one. One ten, one B.
B.
Regarding acquisition real estate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Any discussion regarding adding the executive session? Councilor Johnson?
I think it's already on the agenda, isn't it?
Yes.
No.
There is one.
We added.
Who you're adding a second.
Added another one.
Another one.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so. Any discussion regarding that? Okay, all's in favor of adding the second exec, executive session? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed nay?
Nay.
So. Six approved, Councilor Benson voting against. Any other items for the? Change for the agenda? You know, none? All those in favor of the agenda with most, with the executive session added, say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Right. So the agenda is approved. Um, with the changes. And then we moved to our first time of business. Whoops, in the wrong area. Is we have public hearings this evening. And tonight we have three public hearings. The first one will be A B twenty three dash one two three, the property tax levy ordinance. Would you see if there's anyone that's signed up, please? If you wanted to speak to any of the public hearings, there's a, there are signup sheets on the table. Okay, okay, so we will continue. So. I will now open the public hearing. And then proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal to adopt ordinance twelve eighty one, levying regular property taxes for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty four, on all property, both real and personal in said city. Which is subject to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to the city for the ensuing year. Those wish to be, to speak for public comment. Um, if you didn't sign up. We will have a chance to raise your hand in the council chambers or online. And for those that wish to speak, um, please state your name and city residents, direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individuals. And please note, this is not a time to ask questions for the council, mayor, or staff to, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your comments. So you would have three minutes to speak. And when you have thirty seconds left, you will see a flashing yellow light. And if online, we will advise you at the thirty seconds limit, so. Um, anyone wish to speak, please raise your hand. Do not see anyone in, at the council chambers raising their hand? Anyone online? And I believe it is, um, star nine, if you wish to raise your hand. Alright. Not seeing one online either. So we've come to the. End then of this, of the public hearing. So I declare this particular public hearing. Closed for the, for the property tax levy ordinance. So. Right. So we have another public hearing. It is A B. Two, three, one, two, four, the increased ordinance certifying an increase in property taxes. And I will open the public hearing. And this is to, people, communities invited to provide comments regarding proposal to adopt ordinance twelve eighty two, certifying increase in the regular property tax rev, revenue for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty four. On all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of providing sufficient revenue to the city for the ensuing year. So those who wish to speak. Uh, make public comments. Please raise your hand in the chambers. Or online, by raising, um, hitting star nine. So again, look. I'm not seeing anyone. Right. So I declare the public hearing on the increased ordinance certifying increase in public tax, property taxes closed. At seven oh eight, and now we have one more. And it is A B twenty three dash one three two, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, mid biennial budget amendment. So I will, the public hearing. In this proceeding, the community is invited to make. Um, public comments regarding the proposal to adopt ordinance twelve eighty three, mending the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget. So if there's anyone that wishes to speak. Um, please raise your hand in council chambers or hit star nine online. Again, I do not see anyone wishing to make public comment. So that means we are closing the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget amendment, public hearing at seven oh nine. Right. Alright, we are done with the public hearings, then we move on to commission accomplishments for twenty twenty three. So this is very exciting. We have, um, people from our commissions that would be presenting. And we have representatives from four committees, commissions. Each representative will have five minutes to provide an overview of the commission accomplishments for twenty twenty three. So from the arts commission. We have chairs Donna Kronk and Kat Cotton. So do you wish to come forward and make your presentation? We need to use that. Can you get her the hand mic, please? Hand mic? There you go.
That's right.
Right there. We found that this one is, doesn't seem to be working.
Um, hi, I'm Donna Kronk. Uh, I am, you know. Serve on the Arts Commission with Kat Cotton. Um, and we have a couple of slides for you, so as soon as they advance, but we are a very, very newly established commission. Um, we had to, a couple of, uh, uh, commissioners that had been long tenured left in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one. Which just left us with having to build a new structure for our commission. So our journey really pretty much started in twenty twenty two. We had a commission retreat to develop our mission, some goals, and a bit of a vision of what we wanted to do for twenty twenty three. Um. The older commission had a real set structure for just summer months, and our first, uh, goal was to really kind of diversify more of our events. We wanted to have them more spread out throughout the year to really bring art to the community. We also simplified our mission statement. As you can see, it's very simple, but it's also specific, and we're talking about enriching our community through art. Through art installations, through events. And we want to build community. In that way. Um, next was a goal, and the goal was, um. Wanting to have different types of events, ones that also focused on kids. Families. And not just wine walks. So we wanted to really have a bit of a broader stroke, if you will. Um. We also decided we wanted to do a survey to our community to find out what they were looking for and what they wanted from art. Art is, uh, you know, it, the eye of the beholder. Not just, uh, one medium. We talked a lot about, should we bring dance to the community? Should we bring fashion? Should we bring clay? Should we bring other things besides just painting? Um, our vision was also to have a diverse, like I said, diverse installation and events. Uh, throughout the year. So the team really, really focused on these, and we then we brainstormed on ideas. We took some of the survey ideas. So our next slide shows you some of the events we did in twenty twenty three. And we're not gonna do a lot of words, because we're in the art group. So we started off with a Wing Luke, uh, exhibit. This was a pop-up exhibit, and it was a partnership with the Wing Luke. Um, museum. And that was in the mar, uh, spring, and that was to bring around, um, that was our, he's from Japan. And it was a beautiful exhibit. Uh, next we did in the summer months, our plein air event. That's one we kept on, and this is for real seasoned artists, and we're building this one out so that it'll become more promotional for the Pacific Northwest and the Snoqualmie Valley. We want to see this to grow. I mean, there is a big plein air community out there that we want to make sure that we can start bringing those artists into Snoqualmie. And, uh, then we did art off the rails. This was a newly, newly created event, and it's more family focused, and it's really focused on our Snoqualmie Valley artists, as well as it's bridging the communities of Snoqualmie to North Bend. You jump on the train, you go to North Bend, and they have their art off the rails on their side. This event was really exciting in that it created a buzz, as well as it brought a lot of our youth to volunteer into this event and be involved with arts. Um, throughout the year, we had chalk the block, which we did at Fourth of July. We did it at the International, uh, sorry. Somebody's calling. I love this watch for that reason. Uh, chalk the block events through the international block party, and that's for kids to just express their art through, and it can wash that right off. And then, um, I don't know if you've noticed around the community, but we have a new little mascot. And it's Lawrence the Elk. And Lawrence is our bit of branding, and, uh, that was another thing we wanted to do. So Lawrence the Elk has shown up in seasonal murals throughout the. Community, up, up on the ridge or down here. Lawrence is getting kind of lonely, so now we have Elkie, who will be joining Lawrence in the winter. And, uh, lastly, we are going to create a Facebook page, because they have quite the following, apparently, with kids and so forth in the community. So this is just a bit of a start, uh, that this newly established commission has created. Um, we're really excited by the work that we've done this last year. We really moved away from some really established art ideas. And I know there's been some disappointment in the community, but there's also been new enthusiasm for art. So hope you enjoy that, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I know that I've attended several events, and they're always very fun, and you've put a lot of organization and thought into it, so thank you for that. Right. Next up, we have Economic Development Commission. We've, um, been able to make it. Bobby Harrison? Yes, we have somebody else who can do it, or?
We do have Joel Gibson, um, from the E D C available to present this next slide.
Excellent.
Hello, Joel Gibson, E D C, and I am going to present the accomplishments. Um. That were, um, recommended and approved, or to city council. Number one, supporting the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Task Force. Lewis Washington chairs the public. Subcommittee. Others have attended and participated in meetings. Number two, support of the Snoqualmie Valley Economic Alliance that is advancing to the council for final deliberation. Number three, support of the Downtown Merchants Association by attending meetings and reporting to the merchants and the E D C of needs and feedback. And the E D C of needs and feedback. Downtown merchants have meetings the first Thursday of each month. And, um, E D C has been, um, present at the, you know, as many meetings as possible to. Um, get feedback and support the downtown merchants. Uh, business visits, we have ongoing business, business visits, uh, from our commission members. Um, our most recent ask was that we each try to visit. A minimum of two businesses in Snoqualmie each month. So we're working on that as, um, ongoing right now. Um, number five, um, we've composed the E D C portion of the twenty forty-four comp plan. Uh, six, we signed a letter for the planning commission to approve the E D C comp plan, which was approved. Seven, signed a letter for the city council to approve the E D C comp plan, which again was approved as well. Eight, uh, wrote a letter of support and approval from the E D C for the community center expansion and pool to council. Uh, number nine, there's continued discussions of the model train museum development. Ten, support of city events, uh, and you know, attending, you know, front events, um. Throughout the city of Snoqualmie throughout the year to see how we can continue to grow as a tourist destination. Eleven, developed and sent a letter for approval from the planning commission of the E D C's goals, vision. And policies in regard to the twenty forty-four comp plan, which, uh, was approved. And twelve, attended and advised on the housing task for round, task force around it for affordable housing. And, um, that's a summary of the accomplishments of the E D C.
Thank you, Joel. We appreciate E D C's work on the comprehensive plan and, um, I guess getting out into the. Getting on visiting businesses so we can find out where, where our weaknesses are and how we can help them. And, um, and supporting the different projects. So, thank you.
Great.
So next group parks and events commission, we have Chair Paul Schwim.
Have to use the handheld.
I think the handheld. Turn the handheld, I think.
Good evening. I'm Paul Swam, the Snoqualmie Parks and Events Commission Chair. I'll try to keep the time succinct this evening. Uh. We basically cover the parks and the trails, recreational facilities, open spaces and community events for the city. Um, we can move through the slides here. Our main photograph there being of the Riverview Park, if we need to refer to it. I won't go through all the slides one by one, but you can at least get an idea of. The accomplishment, accomplishments that we covered this year. And then the next slide shows our goals for twenty twenty-four. Um, the content of our report. Was the product of discussion as an agenda item over our last three commission meetings. It was a collaborative event informed and made better with the analysis and suggestions from every commissioner and from city staff input. As a chair, I would like to thank all the other commissioners for their hard work, some of whom are here this evening. Their direct questioning, creative problem solving, and the individual expertise each brings to the group. Which is clearly bolstered through advanced preparation. The thought that goes into their work in addition to the actual work goes beyond just the meetings. Since this is the first presentation of its kind to the council that I can recall. I'd like to give special thanks to the city staff we work with, both current and former. Some former folks being Larry White, Dan Murchenko and Joan Quaid. Um, for their input and diligence, the staff keep that frog jumping on projects. Through our guidance and advice for assembling meeting agendas. Detailing the tracking of meetings through the minutes and at times keeping us on point and out of trouble. If I can go off script for a second. One bullet point that is not called out on our slides is how the commission serves as a backstop to support the city staff. You know, having worked in city governments, um, I understand and appreciate the efforts. By staff that go easily overlooked, how they take on multiple roles. The tendency for them to be overworked through long hours. And the thankless aspects of their duties that are not seen by the public and therefore not applauded. We should applaud them each and every day. The commission seeks any feedback and suggestions from the mayor in the city council. In its efforts to operate as an effective advisory body in the city's parks and events functions. Thank you for your time, attention and guidance.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys have been doing on, I guess, helping. Guide us through some of the projects and providing your input on it. So. And the review park, I know you helped to pick up the, the train theme. So it's a very cute park. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have planning commission. We have Chair Luke Merziac.
Good evening. I'm Luke Merziac, Chair of the Planning Commission. And the biggest goal we had was to support the comprehensive plan twenty forty-four focus. And provide recommendations to the council primarily through the committees. And in twenty twenty-three, it was the CDC. Uh, so that they could then analyze those recommendations for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. First thing we did is we looked at the Puget Sound Regional Council twenty fifty vision discussion. We had a couple of joint meetings with the CDC. Uh, looked for it close at things like what the housing needs were, uh, what the state and the county were asking us to do. And really focused on, um, we thought there was a right way and a wrong way to do things and working with the CDC. Making sure we focused on the affordable housing, the middle housing, the gaps we had in Snoqualmie. Um, one of the things that, uh, we also have as planning commission is historic design review. There were two things. That occurred there. One was the buckshot honey pergola and the gear automotive design review color. Sounds like a small thing, but, uh, the reason there's not a shiny breast metal aluminum badge or a sign in downtown is because. Planet Commission has all interiors and say that wouldn't look good in Snoqualmie. So, uh, we did that. And then we got into the meat of the comp plan. One of the things we did was H B thirteen thirty-seven. The state has said that you really need to include A D U's as part of your comp plan. We decided to move faster on that. So we put together a recommendation to amend S M C seventeen dot five, five dot oh, seven, oh, code amendment. That we go ahead and include A D U's earlier. And that went through committee and I understand that approved by the council. Uh, from there, we spent a lot of time doing the land use recommendation. Um, that was making sure we keep the character and the story. And, uh, the economic interest, the local economy, uh, all in alignment with the comp plan. We made those goals and policies recommendations to the CDC. We also reviewed the E D C economic development goals and policies recommendation. We thought they did an outstanding job. One thing just to add is we did think, uh, it's really important to have a, a must see attraction in downtown Snoqualmie. To get the one point five million people go to the falls to come into the town and not just go to Issaquah or elsewhere. We then went into the house comp plan goals and policies recommendation, looked very closely. On how we can not only address the affordable, uh, slash workforce housing, but also. Uh, mechanisms in place to keep affordable housing affordable. So that just doesn't appreciate out of that. And that also got presented to the CDC and I believe it's still, uh, being, uh, the recommendation is being considered there. We then dove into the transportation cop plan element review. That was pretty detailed. We looked at things like bike lanes. How to make sure traffic flow goes well, but we still keep the small town atmosphere and keep, um, the pedestrian aspect of the Snoqualmie whole. So that was in general, what the planning commission did. There was a whole lot of meetings, input and talk and certainly support from the staff that I thank them for.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You did a lot of work on the com- comprehensive plan. So, and everything else. And thank you very much. Council, do we have any comments or questions for any of the commissions? Council Johnson?
Thank you for all of, uh, your hard work from all the commissions. It's, uh, it's a lot of work.
And all volunteers. Sir, that's our one.
I also echoed that and I, I often think that it's the creativity that comes through the commissions. That make the city what it is. So, um. Deeply appreciate the Arts Commission, the parks, the, the, um, E D C, the work of the planning commission because. Um, you, you go through a lot of thinking and a lot of, of envisioning. And that makes our job a lot easier. So it's deeply appreciated.
Council Benson?
Yeah. And so much of the stuff that, uh, you folks work on is stuff that people encounter. And it's right in their face, you know, the arts that we've got going on, the parks that we've got going on. The ability for, for people to come in and actually live in this city, maybe in an A D U. Uh, and getting ahead of a problem like that and, and helping us to address issues like that in creative ways. So thank you very much. Really appreciate, uh. The, the, the volunteerism, uh, of all of you. I, I never did it. So thank you.
That's Washington.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much for your hard work, but also thank you for your willingness to get involved. Very much appreciated.
So if you are in a commission, would you please stand? Cause there's some others here that didn't, didn't get a chance to talk. Thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for the presentations. Right. At this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. First, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of this city. In efficient orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city residence for the record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor or staff, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. Public comments during this portion of the meeting should be limited to topics concerning current, future or requested city projects. Actions, programs, plans and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not. Germaine and may result in your comments being suspended. And last, please respect the decorum of these proceedings as all respect would be afforded you. So with that, if there's someone like to have public comment, please raise your hand. So the gentleman back here and then.
Hi, I'm Dave Eifert. Um, and I live just outside of Snoqualmie in unincorporated King County. Does that? Mean that I can't speak?
Oh, no, you can't. Absolutely.
So for those of you who don't know me, which is most of you, uh, my history here in the valley over the thirty years is I'm a. Uh, founding member of the Snoqualmie Brewery, um, downtown, uh, merchants, uh, meetings. Um, and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as participating in the, uh, housing task force way back in the formative years. So. A couple of years, uh, or a couple of weeks ago, I attended a meeting of the housing task force after. Dropping out of employment and wearing sweats all day long. Get re-engaged. And, and, and something that happened there was really frustrating, which was, um. They were talking about, oh, we might be able to convert a motel and develop twelve units of affordable housing there. Or we might be able to do that and develop thirty. And, and I learned at the meeting, well. Four out of five, eight thousand out of ten thousand employees in the valley can't live here because they can't afford to. And, and so I thought, wow, that, that seems really wrong. And. I, then I read the thing that really set me off was in the November third valley record. Well, the city is toying with the idea of expanding the community center to the tune of, um. What was it? Twenty-seven million dollars. And I thought, really? When eight out of ten people that work in the valley and serve us can't live here? That's crazy. Um, I don't know how many of you are old enough to be familiar with, um, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You got your, your basic air, water, um, food, stuff like that at the bottom and shelter. Up at the top, you've got self-actualization, whatever that was in nineteen seventy. And, um, and furs and jewels and stuff like that. It's like spending that money on the community center spins that hierarchy of needs on its head. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense. And I, we can do better than that. One of the things that I used to hear from talking with, um, Pat Anderson, who used to be city attorney. Um, and a couple of other city employees was, well, that's a different funding stream. But you know, people create funding streams and funding streams can be changed. And I just urge you to not have this icing on the cake. Consider that. When everybody's spending their lives sitting on eighteen in their older cars, eating gas. To come out here and clean our houses and serve our burgers and stuff like that. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right. Use the handheld, please.
Hello. Okay. Hi, I'm Catherine Podgwood, um, on seventy-nine fifty-one Maple Avenue Southeast in downtown Snoqualmie. And also a downtown merchant. Um, I really just wanted to express my gratitude in the work that we've been doing for the merchant group. To the city and our close work with our community liaison, Nicole Weeby. And we have a very exciting lineup for this. Uh, end of the year. Sorry, I hate public speaking. Um. Holiday season and, uh. I just really wanted to thank everybody for all the continued efforts in community and our public, private. Nonprofit and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers like to speak? Hey, anyone online wish to have public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. So. Right. So we are, public comment now is now closed at seven thirty-three and we move on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda contains a previous city council meeting minutes dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Approved the claims approval report dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. A B twenty-three dash one, two, nine, resolution sixteen seventy-one approving the city's allocation. For the twenty twenty-four Northeast King County Regional Public Safety Communication Agency or NORCOM budget. A B twenty-three dash one, three, four, resolution sixteen seventy-two. Executing a purchase and sell agreement for the King County Property Parcel Identification Number seven, eight, five, three, two, four, zero, seven, seven, zero. Council may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Council One. Is there any public comment regarding any of these items that are on the consent agenda? So please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone online, raise your hands or in the council chambers. Council, any discussion? See none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? So the council agenda is approved. Move on to ordinances. So the first ordinance this evening is A B twenty-three dash one, two, three. The property tax levy ordinance loving, loving property taxes. Um, this is the first reading ordinance twelve eighty-one. Mayor Protim Halli, would you please read the summary?
Thank you. City of Snoqualmie requires, requires a twenty twenty-four regular levy of the amount of. Eight million, seven hundred, two thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars, which requires a max one percent increase in property tax revenue from the previous year. Amounts resulting from the addition of new construction and improvements to property increases in the value of state assessed property. Amounts authorized by law as a result of any accusations and refunds made by King County. Property tax revenues are required in order to cover expected expenditures and obligations of the city of Snoqualmie. I believe this is first reading. Correct. So no more.
That is correct. Yes. So this is a continuation of a conversation or discussion we were having earlier during the, um, round table that started at six P M. We do have Jenna Walker. Um, if you want to come up and continue presenting, but I think, but first. up and continue presenting. But I think, but first, we do need, if there's any public comment regarding this item? Yes, so please raise your hand. We did have a public hearing, and there was no comments at that point. I'm not seeing anyone. So, so our budget manager, Jenna Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just getting my slides up here. And this is a truncated slideshow from what we discussed in the roundtable. And this relates to both AB 23-23, 123, and AB 23-124. These two ordinances address an increase to property taxes that increases last year's actual levy amount by 75.7,000, which is a 0.89% increase. And then also, the second one will certify regular and excess property taxes to King County Assessor's Office. The levy for 2024 begins with last year's levy of 8.52 million. It would be increased by its maximum increase, allowable increase of 76,000. There's in addition some new construction in Snoqualmie that increases that levy by 17,000. There's also refunds that King County received that is revenue to the city. The final line item is utility value of 78,000. The city does not actually expect to receive that revenue, but there is a chance that state assessed utility values will increase. And we have left that in in case they do increase, because this 8.7 million is the maximum that we can receive. So we've set it as high as we can. And then we'll find out in December after we're required, we are required to report this to King County, what the actual increase to utility value is. So our regular levy on this says 8.7 million. It is expected to be about 78,000 lower. And there is no excess levy in the current year. The, our fire station bond was retired in 2022. Locally assessed values were 5.44 billion. In 2023, they have decreased to 4.5 billion. And the end result of that is that the regular levy rate increases. The increase, though, does not necessarily result in an increase in taxes to individual homeowners. The increase is the 77,000 that was discussed at the beginning is the increase. And what it means to an individual homeowner for an assessed value of a home of 700,000, they would expect to have a $12 increase related to the city of Snoqualmie's tax levy increase. For a larger home, or a more valuable home of 1.5 million, it would be a $25, approximate $25 increase. So that would be the levy that we are expecting to, we are hoping to pass. That's how much it would increase taxes as a whole, as revenue for the city, and then on individual taxpayers.
I think to, maybe I think you should show the dollar bill so that others that are tuning in now get a chance to see what that means.
Thank you, Mayor. For every dollar paid in property taxes, the city of Snoqualmie only receives 18 cents. The remainder of that goes to King County, 13 cents. 33 cents goes to Snoqualmie Valley School Districts. 26 cents goes to the state school fund, and the remaining 10 cents is divided into things like the libraries, the hospitals, the port authority, et cetera. So if we take that 18 cents on the dollar that Snoqualmie gets, it is used to support our police service at 5 cents. 4 cents goes to support the fire service. 3 cents goes to administration, 2 cents to the parks, and 4 cents to other things. That includes community development, street maintenance, court services, human services, et cetera.
Counselor, do you have any questions? Mayor Protim Holloway?
I'm afraid, because I'm afraid it's going to get into the non-Euclidean math. But can we get clarification on the 0.89% from the county of how that was calculated? That's in essence, an 11% reduction from what should be our authority on this tax increase. So I'm just curious for discussion in FNA.
Sure.
How that calculation came about?
We will get more details on that ready for FNA next time.
Thank you.
There was a worksheet on how it was calculated. It's in the packet.
There is a worksheet, but that portion of us, they, of it, they just give to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Benson?
Just want to put in my own 2 cents, because it seems like we really need it. Do they ever make mistakes when they're calculating that? Do they ever, or is it, is it like a, it's like a fiat, where they can't make a mistake because whatever they say is what it is?
That's an excellent question that I hope to get back to FNA on. It feels more like a fiat, though, how they hand it to me. But I don't know.
Counselor Johnson?
Kind of a similar question is, if the assessor says, hey, your house is worth $20 million, I'm like, no, it's only worth half a million. Is there an appeal process that someone could go through?
Absolutely. And that's through the King County Assessor's Office on the website. And we've also posted, or we're in the process of posting, if you need property tax relief, there is options on the King County Assessor's Office website. And I believe our Snoqualmie website is in the process of referencing that for easy access.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, just to amplify that point that was just made about relief for those who might be on fixed incomes or limited incomes, there is significant change coming this year to the level, the income level below which you're eligible for relief. It's quite an increase, quite a dollar increase, meaning you can have quite a bit more income, yet qualify for those relief programs. The expectation is that a fair number of people that perhaps previously did not qualify now can qualify. So I, I know that we're planning to do communication around that, but for any members of the public that might be watching this, strongly encourage you, if you think there's any chance that your income level might match, or let me put it differently, if you're on a fixed income, go look at those levels. Because this is something the county assessor's office in particular has pushed very hard, is for those programs and to ensure that anyone that can qualify for those, that they're making sure that they are eligible. So, and, and there, you can reach out to them for help as well as you can on Councilmember Johnson's question. If you think there's a problem with your assessment, they welcome those calls and they can guide you through a process for appealing. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? We, we do, we will review it again, our second reading during the next council meeting on November 27.
Right. And just a reminder that it does need to be passed before November 30th if we want a property tax to increase that levy amount.
So the next item, second ordinance tonight is AB 23-124, the Increase Ordinance Certifying an Increase in Property Taxes. This is the first reading ordinance 1282. Mayor Protim Holloway, would you please read the summary?
City Snoqualmie requires a regular levy in the amount of $8,702,496, which includes an 8.9% increase in property tax revenue in the amount of $75,743 from the previous year to discharge the expected expenses and obligations city of Snoqualmie. And yeah, no, no motions, first reading only.
Point of clarification?
Counselor Mayhew?
I think it was read in as 8.9% increase. I believe it is 0.89% increase.
We should, we should make sure that we get.
89% increase.
I, I think there might, might be some people that would be surprised to hear an 8.9% increase, which is not what it is. It's 0.89%.
Thank you for the clarification. So, is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. I will look. Seen anyone in council chambers or online? Please raise your hand. Not seen anyone? We do have our budget manager, Jenna Walker. Jenna Walker, can you tell us, what is the difference between this one and the other one? Maybe you can provide that for anyone that's watching and not understand what the difference is?
So one certifies, yes, we are levying taxes this year. And the other certify, says that there is an increase to our levy. So the increase is that 0.89% that was mentioned just now.
Thank you. So do we have any comments regarding this? Okay. Thank you. So we will move on, and we will, again, this one will be scheduled for November 22 for a second reading. The third ordinance tonight is AB 23-132, 2023 to 2024, Mid-Biennial Budget Amendment. This is the first reading of ordinance 1283. Mayor Protim Holloway, would you please read the summary?
So check. So the purpose, the purpose of the ordinance is to amend the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget to provide the city with the appropriate appropriation necessary to cover multiple amendments requests, including citywide insurance premiums, replacement of police department, gun range, backstop materials, several CIP projects, IT system repair, and the ERP system project. And this is first reading.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this, this item, the mid-biennial budget amendment? See anyone in city, in city chambers? Not raising their hand, or anyone online wishing to speak? So councilors, any discussion on this one? So we did review earlier the ERP portion. We can continue the discussion there. Is that losing my voice? Or we can dive into the other part of the mid, the mid-biennial budget. Counselor Benson?
I, I don't know. Maybe it's going to, maybe it's going to get answered. I read through this, and I didn't have my pocket Jim Mayhew to explain it to me. So I couldn't figure out if the point of this was that we were actually saving money, or if we were moving numbers around in the budget to balance things out. And, and my other concern was that in moving these numbers around to balance things out by eliminating positions that are unfilled and that sort of thing, I, I'm worried that we're going to get into a situation where we have overworked staffed. And that worries me a lot, because we've been dealing with that for a few years. So now it's very possible that none of this has anything to do with anything that I'm talking about, and I just couldn't make heads or tails of this. But one thing in the version that I was looking at, was, that I was really worried about was item 14 under analysis about retitling our behavioral health specialist to mental health professional and community co-responder. If we do anything to change Stephanie's job so that she can't continue to do the amazing stuff she's been doing, I'm really scared. Those are all the things I'm going to say. All of them may be completely off topic, but just make me feel better.
They'll be on topic in about 20 minutes when we discuss the staffing plan. So, yeah, I think good questions for.
AB 23-132, the mid-biennial.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
Amendment. Yes.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Strike everything that I said.
It's good, though. No? Good stuff.
Okay, part of the mid-biennium amendment is the mid-biennium review, and I'm just going to go through it quickly so that we have a little bit of background. So the mid-biennial budget update, this is based on the Q3 report, which you will find in the appendix or in the packet toward the end informationally. And just a heads up that we are in the middle of an ERP implementation. So what you will see of the Q3 report goes through September 18 instead of the end of the month, September 30. We will be updating that with expenditures and revenues that go all the way through the 30th in the next hopefully week. And you'll see that in the appendix. But the fund balance information is relying on the September 18 details. So just a heads up that that's where we are in the finance department right now. The current condition of the city, ERP implementation underway, as I said, revenues are expected to decline as Snoqualmie Tribe properties within the city have moved into trust, as we discussed during the roundtable. Also, citywide expenditures have been affected by high inflation. As I'm sure you're all aware, I think 2022 had about an 8.9% inflation rate in King County area. And it's, it's still been high for the, for the periods that we've had so far from the King County Economic Forecast for 2023. We have some management and professional vacancies, approximately 17.5%, which offset some of our expenses. Administration is currently filling vacant positions as we speak. Labor negotiations are not finalized for all bargaining units. Completion will result in citywide salary and benefit cost increases. And then finally, utility rate study is in the process of commencing. That will, the book of that work will incur in 2024 so that we can adjust our utility rates to appropriate levels. The, this mid-biennium review focuses on the general fund. General fund revenues are expected to come in at 20 million for the year, which is about 426,000 higher than expected. We've had strong performance from utility taxes, DNO taxes, and charges for goods and services. Operating expenses are currently projected at 20.1 million, which is 582,000 lower than appropriation levels. These savings are mostly found within the Community Development Department, which is a separate classification within the general fund. And you can just see kind of a detailed revenue table. You can see property taxes are a little bit low, sales taxes a little bit low, not quite as low as this appears, because it doesn't include the end of September 30, which is when we record September's revenues. Then we have a lot of things that are outperforming. Total result, end result is that general fund revenues are expected to be about 102% of the budgeted amounts, amounts estimated at budget. For expenditures, oh, pardon. Yeah, sales tax revenue is one of the ones that's much lower. It's 331,000 less than budgetary expect, expectations. When I, when you see me incorporate, end of September, though, it'll change to about 100,000 below expectations. Utility tax revenue is about 184,000 higher than budgeted. And charges for goods and services are expected to be 326,000 higher than budgeted, primarily due to community development, increased collections. And you can see our classifications within the general fund. On average, we're doing well. Total expenditures down at the bottom are at 97% of budgeted appropriation. The, the savings are found mostly in community development vacancies, and we've been experiencing a slowdown in expected development activity. So that's had an effect on how we're how we're handling the general fund to some degree this year. So before I go to the long-term forecast, I just want to give a heads up that the long-term forecast does not incorporate anticipated development occurring either on the ridge or in Snoqualmie Mill. It doesn't include salary increases for union negotiations, and the forecast anticipates full staffing levels at the city into the future with annual salary and benefit increases. And this is our table. The light green and light orange lines are what we forecasted where we would be in, in March 2022, we forecasted that this is where we would be right now. And the reality is the darker green and orange lines. You can see that green, the forecasted revenues are just slightly below our expenditures in this current year as part of the budget. They're above for 2024, revenues exceed expenditures. And then they, the lines are going to cross in 2026, or meet, I should say, in 2026, which is a date that we're always trying to push out because of our property taxes are limited in growth to 1% every year or less, as we've just heard. And there's no limit on inflation. So this is a perennial problem for any city in our community that, any city in our state that is primarily, their revenues come from property taxes as ours do. So this, this is our. So this, um, this is our current status. This is our forecast based on the last amendment that was approved by council. So on that note, I am going to switch to amendment gear and go through the proposed amendment that we have. The first um, amendment, and just as a partial answer to you, you mentioned, oh, you know what? That was about staffing. Forget that. Citywide insurance premiums are increasing more than we budgeted. Um, in twenty twenty-three, I believe that there's thirty-some thousand over what we budgeted. And then in twenty twenty-four, they're estimated to be a hundred and eighty-some thousand over what we estimated, which is a twenty-five percent increase over what occurred in twenty twenty-three. We don't have a lot of control of our insurance. We are in a pooled group with Washington City's Insurance Authority. And um, I checked to see how much everybody's are increasing. Our rates increased twenty-five percent. The average increase was thirty-three percent. So it, it actually means we're doing well. It doesn't feel like we're doing well, but it, um, it's a reflection of of the properties that we own. It's a reflection of our, how many claims we have every year. So we're doing better than the average cities, even though it's still going up a lot. And so the total, and that is, as you can see, there's two columns up here. There's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four appropriation increase requested. That's ongoing and that's one time. And this insurance request would be an ongoing expenditure. The next item is the police department gun range lead abatement. This is fifty thousand dollars, which goes to support. Um, that's not the total cost of doing this lead abatement. We have to replace a lot of the materials that have been used. I think it's, is it twenty years? Twenty years. Um, so this is the kind of expense, usually we're able to clean it, but we're at the point where OSHA would require us to replace this so that it's not a health hazard to our police officers and so that the facility can continue to be used. So this fifty thousand dollar increase in appropriation is a one-time expenditure. The next three are rather easy ones. They all come from agenda bills um, that have already been approved by council. Agenda bill twenty-three eighty-eight, uh, was regarding Centennial Fields All-Inclusive Park. It represents an increase in appropriation of a hundred and ten thousand, approximately, a hundred and ten thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Um, this is a project in our CIP and uh, I believe that we had to carry forward appropriation that was in twenty twenty-two that we expected to use, but that didn't get spent. So that's what that amendment is for. The next one, Stormwater Pond Improvement relates to um, new fencing that was needed and the total appropriation increase for that is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-three. This is matched in part by seventy-five thousand from a stormwater grant. In addition, the remainder um, comes from the Stormwater Utility Fund, which uh, it will be a transfer, it'll be a decrease in appropriation for stormwater utility and then a transfer into utility capital. So the increase in appropriation is matched by funds, by city funds and um, grant funds. And then our final agenda bill is Eagle Lake Reclamation Basin. Uh, this, this project, a project in our CIP required an additional forty-nine thousand six dollars, and it was approved in Agenda Bill twenty-three dash one-ten on October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Now, our next one is the one that we discussed in the round table. This is divided into two portions. Six A is the portion that relates to the implementation of the ERP. So we need an additional three hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and nine dollars. This comes, it's lower than what you saw in the, in the memo for several reasons. We are able to transfer some funds from the general fund that were intended for implementation of the ERP. There's a hundred thousand dollars in temporary labor that we will transfer out of the general fund and into this new, new three hundred and fifty fund for the ERP project. We'll do the same thing in IT. There's funds um, that were appropriated that will not be used in UT, in IT and that will be transferred. And then also we are appropriating, IT has a fund balance that is committed for the ERP implementation. And we will be appropriating all of that balance and transferring it into the new fund. In addition, there are, we are um, increasing appropriation within non-utility capital and utility capital to support this. And you'll see in that the final page the breakout of where some of these are fun, when it says funding for an additional appropriation, you can see the breakout of how much is coming from non-utility capital fund and utility capital fund. It's approximately sixty-one thousand of each. And those are working to support um, contracts and project accounting and asset management. In addition, there's a, an appropriation from sewer utility fund, and that is in support of the irrigation system survey that was discussed as part of the contingency. So the net increase to all these funds is three hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and nine dollars. If you look at the reconciliation tables, you will see some more things. You'll see a hundred thousand dollars. This is an accounting answer right here. So if you're feeling a little fuzzy, you're probably not alone. But the way that appropriations work is that within each fund, we are responsible for we can't a fund represents a spending goal, I'm gonna say. So we're creating a fund for the ERP project, but we can't transfer money between funds without approval by council. So we're decreasing the general fund appropriation. The, that's the approved budget that council gave us. We're decreasing that, but we're increasing transfers. So the net effect in the general fund is going to be zero dollars. That money will be transferred to the new fund. There's a similar thing going on in the IT fund, although um, we're taking out the appropriation and transferring it, but then we're also increasing. We're using that IT ERP fund balance that's committed for this implementation and moving that out because that's, that's what council intended it to be used for. That's what it should be used for. So it's moving out to that three hundred and fifty account.
Councilor Johnson?
Okay. Trying to wrap my head around it all, and uh, I look forward to Councilor Mayhew correcting anything I get wrong here. So what I'm seeing is that we've got two point four million dollars in request additional appropriation that uh, somewhere's around point nine million is from transfers between funds. So that doesn't mean that we need new revenue to cover that. That means we actually have the money. We're just moving it from here to here to pay for that additional appropriation. And then we also have identified based on uh, my questionable math of adding things up, somewhere's around point nine million in additional sources. And my problem is that I'm still coming up about point six million short.
The reconciliation tables are going to help you out. So there is, you, are you relying on the latest packet to the numbers that you said? Okay.
The top.
So the two point four million is our increased appropriation.
Yes.
Okay. Um, um, attachments, three and four do a really good job of laying out where the transfers are, where the money is going, where it's coming from. But essentially, of that two point four million dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand of it is transfers. Four hundred and thirty-five of it, four hundred and thirty-five thousand of it is revenue, um, including non-recurring sales tax and grants. And then the remaining the increased spend, let's see. It's for the biennium, the increased spend is eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then you have to add that hundred and fifty thousand that will be spent in the next biennium to come up with one point zero million, which is the increased ask.
I just noticed something that I did wrong, but it's gonna go the wrong direction. Let's do this real quick. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So now I've got the one point one. All right. Now tell me where did that one point one shortfall is gonna come from?
So where it's going to come from?
Right. Cause I, I've got the, we're one point one million short based on the numbers that are here.
Right.
So now where's that come from again?
So at various places, um, the agenda bills, those three are going to come from fund balance. There's no revenue for those. That's decreasing our utility and non-utility capital fund balance. Um, the insurance, general fund, that's not an appropriation that we have. So we don't have, that will just basically be increasing appropriation and decreasing our general fund revenue. Similarly, with the gun range lead abatement. So basically, this final one point zero million is the decrease in fund balance that we would experience.
Okay.
And um, just as a reminder, a hundred and fifty thousand of that will not decrease until twenty twenty-five when we spend that final portion of that ERP budget. And an easy way to look at that is if you look at um, attachment four. This is the reconciliation table. At the very bottom right, you can see how much the fund decreases or increases. And since this is an amendment, it always decreases unless it were just transfers.
Sorry, which one? Which one?
So AB one, AB twenty-three, one thirty-two dash four. If you go to the very bottom of it, in the yellow, you'll see ending fund balance, total for all amendments. In yellow, it says eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. That is the decrease in our fund balance because of this amendment. No, it's the one right report. My apologies for not including pages unnecessarily confusing.
I thought the guy that looks like.
First try.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, if you just say after the thing that you said.
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever.
So if you follow that page to the very bottom, you'll see on the right, it shows ending fund balance. For each fund, there's an increase and a decrease. If you go to the very bottom where it's yellow, it sums up all those increases and decreases over both years, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And that eight hundred and seventy-two thousand number at the very bottom right corner represents the decrease in fund balance as a result of this amendment.
Councilor Mayhew?
So not to pull the rug out, but I think what happens, the fund balance is largely irrelevant. But this table shows you what you need to, to say. And the reason I say that is this is the same thing I say to you guys all the time. Remember, there's three types of money we have. Utility funds, capital funds, and then I'll call it general operating funds. Those are the three things we have. Capital funds, the middle guy. Fund balances go up huge amounts, tens of millions of dollars. And then you do projects and they come down by tens of millions of dollars. Has to do with when you do a project and you put aside money for a project. For example, um, we just did a parkway, uh, repaving project this year, five million bucks, better part of five million bucks, four and a half, I think. So there's, that's four and a half million going out in one year, right? There's no four and a half million in revenue this year to cover that. Actually, there is that. Usually there isn't, but generally the rule is that money comes in over time and then goes out uh, in big chunks. Okay, that's capital money. So what happens with the fund balance in any one year isn't the point. With capital funds, the point is what's our long-term CIP say? What's all the stuff that's on there? Plus all the sources and do they match over time? Any one year doesn't matter. Somewhat similar thinking for utility funds, because almost everything we spend in utility funds is capital. There's operating in there. It's not a small number, but it's mostly capital. Same deal. So the key is operating, general operating funds. And the key there is you want to make sure that your current year sources cover your current year expenditures. So when I look at this with that kind of thinking in mind, I look at general fund, oh, oh, one, and I look at sources and uses. Um, and I, I don't look at the ending fund balance. I say, I look at, okay. The idea here is sources. I see twenty-one point eight million. I see uses twenty-one point five million. That's the right way. That's what I want to see. So I look for that. I don't really look at the fund balance. So you kind of gotta depend. Now, all those funds with three hundreds in them, those are capital funds. All the ones with four hundreds in them, those are the utility funds. So um, turns out five oh two is, is part of the general stuff of. So I, I look at oh, oh, one and oh, oh, and five oh two from a perspective of the uses versus the sources. The other guys um, really just sort of think about whether I'm okay with that. I think about really long-term. Three hundreds, I'm looking at a six-year CIP. Heck, for the four hundreds, we do a twenty-year look. So it's really a question of what did our twenty-year look expect us to spend versus what we are spending? Are there timing differences or are there real differences? Because if they're real differences, what do we have to do? Change the utility rates. We've got to cover that. Okay. So, but you can't see it just from this table because when you look at just what happens this biennium, which is what we're being asked to authorize. It's really, you gotta know, wait a minute, are you moving something in or out? Is it just a timing thing or is this, so there's just bigger questions, but um, so the problem is how do you answer all those questions I just said on one piece of paper, which is what our budget manager is trying to do for us. So um, you know, what I do is I sort of know, because I'm thinking about this a lot, I know that the three hundred series for six years, that's a fifty to sixty million dollar pool of expenditures. So when I look at and I see, okay, we moved something by, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand, doesn't get me too excited. Um, so that's kind of, that's the kind of thing that goes through my mind. So I don't know if that's helpful to all of you, but for what it's worth, that's how I look at it.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, uh, definitely very helpful to put it in the, that perspective. Um, I think that what I worry about is if at the end of every year, we're coming back saying that we're a million under and we need to pull that from fund balance. And if that's the case, year over year, and that that's how we're budgeting, that's when I start to get worried that eventually we're gonna run out of that fund balance. So.
Councilor Mayhew?
Well, it's worth, I one hundred percent agree with that. That is how to focus on it. So in our earlier discussion in the round table, the primary thing going on here is that now I'm gonna goof the number up. I want to say eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy thousand, something like that is the bulk of this is this ERP system. And so remember, we appropriate spending. We don't appropriate revenue. We can't. We hereby command the following sales taxes shall appear. We don't have that ability, right? We can levy a tax rate and then we see what shows up based on what spending is and what the sales tax collections are. But we do control spending. So what they're asking us here to do is spending. So as a reminder from the round table for that eight hundred and seventy thousand, I hope that's the right number. Um, that num, i- am I roughly at the right number? Yeah. Okay. So remember that was explained to us as capital fund expenditures, fund three fifty. And how are we gonna cover it? It turns out that so far in the biennium, we think we're gonna be at least eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars of revenue above what we planned. So when we did that six-year CIP, we had our fifty or sixty million dollar number of expenditures we thought we would do. Remember, we only approved two years of that spending, but it was based on our vision for the six years. We thought we were gonna have a certain amount of sources. Turns out we're eight hundred and seventy, at least eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars above on those capital sources. And that's what they were trying to tell us in the round table. And that's why they're telling us, yeah, you see eight hundred and seventy thousand here, net sort of increased expenditures. There's pieces going in and out and stuff moving between funds, but if you kind of focus, you know, squint a little and back out, eight hundred and seventy thousand is primarily that. And it's covered by additional capital fund revenues that we didn't think were coming in. So to Councilor Johnson's point, I'll just tell you at F and A committee, when even just a week ago, when we really pressed on this. to Councillor Johnson's point, I'll just tell you at F and A Committee, when even just a week ago, when we really pressed on this, at that point, I was saying, hey, we better cut eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of spending. But now, as they've clarified tonight, no, 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 actually, we do have more revenue by that amount. So we're okay. We don't need to cut spending. We've got the ability to cover this. So that's the net-net big picture message. So I don't know about, you know, any particular, you know, line item at fifty thousand, but big picture, when I look at the numbers, that's how I see it. Budget Manager, I didn't say anything wrong there, did I?
You were great, thank you. I'll move on to the next one, which is six B, the second part of the ERP appropriation, which goes towards SaaS fees. So this is an ongoing expense, sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-five. And we allocate this amount out to other funds, so it's an increase in appropriation, but we would expect to see a similar increase in revenues in the IT fund. And then that sixty-six thousand would be spread out to all the funds who are served by the IT fund. So making it a smaller increase for, for each of those funds. And then the final one, the final amendment request is number seven, the IT system repair. Sorry, it's not the final, it's the final normal one, that's not creation of a fund, IT system repair. This amendment would also be one time. It's a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Been speaking a lot today. This amendment relates to IT system repairs recommended by Avoxi Consulting. And the amount requested includes a fiber audit and an increase to the budgeted core switch replacement amount, which when we got quotations, it was more than we budgeted. So we need to increase the budget for that. This is a one-time expenditure. And it would be a decrease in fund balance as we, as we discussed. That takes us to the bottom one, number eight. Oh, yeah.
Can we just?
Councillor Benson.
Sorry. And those are real things, fiber audit and, and budget core switch replacement, those are real things. But, okay, everybody, all right, great, thank you.
They are real. We have the.
How much is the flux capacitor?
We couldn't afford it this year.
Okay. Number eight now is the summation of all we discussed for the ERP and six A. All that appropriation that's being moved into this new fund. In addition, there is the three hundred and forty-four thousand of nonrecurring sales tax in excess of budget amounts and a sixteen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollar grant. And that, it's a zero-sum game for this one. There's revenues that match the expenditures for this budget amendment. So even though it makes the amendment look very large, this one is, is basically just summarizing what happened above. It's an accounting exercise to move all of the things that we talked out about, out of the funds that they originally were in and into this three hundred and fifty fund where we can bring this ERP project home.
Does, do you have any other comments? Councillor Mahew.
Yeah, so this chart. Just, I just want to be sure, this was not in our advanced, advanced materials, correct?
You are correct. It was not.
Okay, good, because I really.
Sorry.
No, no, I, I didn't mean that as a criticism. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss it. So the problem is, to me, this is absolutely the key of where I'm focused. So one council member's point of view, I, I think all of those things you went over in the chart looked absolutely fine. I, I support all of those. I have, I have no concerns about any of those. And I'm really pleased, frankly, that we're getting that ERP project into its own fund so that you know, just for tracking and we can see all that. So that's, that's fantastic. But let me focus on this guy, because this is where my concerns are and why I have concerns. So I do have concerns with the budget amendment. They're not with any of the stuff that you just took us through. When I look at this chart, so I'm sorry, I'm just doing this, and actually, members of the public don't have this, do they?
I'm pulling it up right now. Okay.
That one says November sixth. The one we're holding says November thirteenth. I don't know if that makes any difference.
It makes a difference. They're all different, but I'm having a hard time seeing which one is agreeing.
It's in the upper right there. God bless you for having a version date on here, okay? In the past, there's been paper.
That's November sixth.
I don't know. The numbers agree on this one, but the date is wrong. Version control is, is failing.
For what it's worth, on the November thirteenth one in my hand, some of the numbers do not agree to the the, gosh, that line chart that you showed us projecting out. So, anyway. I'm not really focused on that. So I'm, I need a little time to go through this and figure out what I think about it, but I'm I don't understand how this big six hundred and thirty-seven thousand number appeared. So I'm going to need to, you're not going to be able to take us through it, I think, in two minutes, but he- here's what I'm kind of. Actually, let me start by just way down at the bottom. I don't understand what's happening in the reserve fund. Because it appears to me the reserve fund is getting dug into this year, but this seems, so I, I just don't understand. So I'm not sure, do you have the paper version? Yeah. So if you look at the twenty twenty-four column down at the bottom. I see beginning fund balance, two point nine million, I see and ending, I think, I think something called general fund balance, two point three, two, three, four, three, three, six, two. Do you see that guy? Which matches the green guy just above, ending fund, fund balance. So I, I'm pretty sure I understand that guy. But the first row said beginning fund balance, two, nine, three, seven. And then we have something called reserves, which appears to be the addition of beginning and ending fund balance, which would suggest that we're double counting.
So we do have a reserve fund, which is zero, zero, two, and the general fund, which is zero, zero, one.
So the thing called beginning fund balance, that's zero, zero, two? So we've got two point nine million and zero, zero, two. Okay, I, I see it on your, I see it on your page one forty-six. So I think that, now I understand it, okay. Okay, good. I didn't understand that. Okay, got it. So then with that in mind, what I'm looking at is if we go up to the row where the red numbers are. And I'm looking at recurring revenues over recurring expenditures. And what I'm worried about is that from your slide earlier, these are not going to be the numbers, because this does not include the union contract increases and the likely M and P increases that will result from those union increases. So here we are, looking at what is our budget going to be next year? And I don't think it's going to be anything like this. And so what I'm worried and, and then I look at twenty twenty-five, granted, that's next biennium. Eighty-two thousand, I'm, I'm pretty sure that goes negative. And I'm pretty sure these negatives in twenty-six and beyond become terrifying, absolutely terrifying.
They're not already terrifying?
They're merely terrifying and now they've become absolutely terrifying. So what I'm worried is we're looking at a forecast or talking about approving a budget amendment. This just, this is just, this is not at all what's going to happen. So what, what's the point? I mean, I have no problem. I endorse all the individual things you took us through, but I don't think I can support this as our our budget, because we know it's going to be much, much worse than this. And so I don't know. You know, what are we going to do? Come back in January and redo it all again? I just, I think.
Wouldn't you love that?
So I'm just saying, wouldn't it? I, I think we need to be realistic about what we're budgeting here and look. All these numbers include estimates. The twenty twenty-four numbers are not made up of known numbers. They're all estimates. Virtually every, maybe there's one or two numbers, because we got some contract that's signed, but what happens if we do a change order? These numbers are all estimates. Well, gosh, the compensation numbers are lousy estimates. We know we're not going to pay that much. We know where we're at in these union negotiations. These are not going to be these amounts. And so if we don't grapple with that now, then here's what we're not going to do. We're not going to do the thing that we have to do right now, which is start cutting costs. And folks, it's not a little bit, it's a lot. We're talking about, I think, fairly significant headcount reductions, service cutbacks, or we've got to figure out how we're going to get more revenue. And so far, we haven't done a thing to get more revenue. We didn't even started the conversation with the community. So that's with regard to general fund. And I don't think these are the right numbers, and I think we need to use realistic numbers. That's number one. And number two, on utility funds, we heard, we went through some of the details there, the decreased utility fund balance. You heard in the presentation, there's a rate study being done in twenty twenty-four. That's fantastic. We can't wait. We already know that these utility funds are overspending. So we asked for, I think, a, a sort of update of the old study that would give us a basis to perhaps do a utility rate increase now. Right? So we can start covering these costs. And I think we've got to do that as part of this budget amendment. And I'd like to see us do it this year. So those are my thoughts.
Your pro, Tim Holloway.
Keep in mind, what we're talking, actually approving is those budget amendments we talked up above. This sheet is a, is a forecast, and you and I both know, the minute you made a forecast, it's wrong. Okay, so we do need to talk that and figure all that out, but it, that is a long-term responsibility, not the narrow responsibility of the action tonight to approve our biennial amendment twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four on those things we talked up above. And I don't think we had argument on those things we talked about. Okay, so I think as far as tonight, we're okay. I, I, but I'm gonna, now I'm going to jump off his track and back on, on to my track of we really expect goods and services to jump by thirty-three percent between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four by a million dollars? I mean, it's either thirty-three or twenty-five, I did.
That was part of the approved budget. We had some increases. We were going to do a comprehensive fee study, which we were expecting to have some increased revenues. There were oh goodness, I don't know all the things, but it was the approved budget. I don't believe revenues have been amended, except maybe.
Piece, that's why I kind of asked on the prior chart, we expected a million dollar increase between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and it seemed a little optimistic in my head. And that's, okay, I'll leave that, leave that alone, but I really that's a big jump.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Councilmember May Hughes' concern, and I think that we need to be top of mind of that. I, I also agree with Mayor Pro Tim Holloway that we need to, to look at this year's biennium, the, the second half. And, and thirdly, I, I think too, part of the concern is the recurring expenditures in parentheses, it does say inflated using August twenty twenty-two King County economic forecast, so that's built in. Albeit, now that once contracts are signed, then we'll have a better idea of where we're at and, and how to adjust accordingly, but we're not there yet. I think it's a fair way until, until we cross that, that bridge. We, we need to be mindful of that, but I think that there's, you know, been work done in, in what we'll be talking about as far as staffing changes. And lastly, just keep this in mind, we have not been fully staffed. So our staffing is significantly below what we budget for. So even though in the budget it says fully staffed, we haven't been there. So, and, and so we're staffing it more like something of ninety percent rather than ninety-five percent of the budget. So I think there's a little bit of leeway, but certainly, you know, those are valid points. And, and with that, it's just, I'm, I'm trying to think through as I'm listening to everyone, but I think I feel comfortable in moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding by any of that budget? Mid-year. Councillor Mahew.
Yeah, just appreciate those comments. At F and A Committee, we went through the topic of where we're at with the staffing. To understand, hey, what, what's going on with the budget on that? I'm going to summarize and please City Administrator Budget Manager, correct me if this is wrong. My takeaway was for twenty twenty-three, the lower spending on employees was offset by contracting costs, and we were basically at a wash there. So we were okay. Going forward in twenty twenty-four, the intention is to fully staff the stuff that Councilmember Benson tried to jump us to, but the intention is to fully staff at this level. So I think those, that forecast sounded correct based on what I thought I heard at F and A. So that's what I thought I heard. And then I would just say, remember too, that the so, so while these contract negotiations are ongoing with the unions, we're aware of where they're headed. We're aware of offers and counter proposals. And we know that the numbers in this budget are not where this is going to end up. We know that. We don't know where it's going to end up. Those, those things are ongoing, but we know they're not going to end here. So what I'm, and, and don't forget the Teamster contract is retroactive to the beginning of twenty twenty-three. So there's a whole chunk we've got to come up with for that. So what I'm very worried about is that the minute we sign these contracts, if we don't immediately cut costs, cut heads, cut services, if we don't immediately cut costs, how on earth do we cover those contracts? So what I'm worried about, I, I take Councilmember Watten's point, well, we're not there today, and it's a fair point. But we're going to be there really soon. And so what is our plan? Do we have a plan? How are we going to deal with that? Because we're going to need one. I think we all know that. And so that's really the concern I'm trying to raise. Right now, as I came into the meeting tonight, my thought was, I'm not going to vote for this, because this is just not what's going to happen. But I take the points that were just made by Councilmember Holloway and Watten. I guess the thinking I now need to get my mind around is, okay, if we do this, how the heck though? And how quickly are we going to respond to what we need to do? Because it's, it's coming like in about half an hour, that's going to get bad, that we're going to sign those things. Not really half an hour. But soon, like soon, soon, soon. So we better be ready, and that's really the concern I'm trying to raise.
City Administrator Chambles.
Correct, and savings and planning have been offset by contracts. Some of the savings in legal have been offset by contracts. There is some savings in legal. Public works savings has not been offset by contracts. Those are real savings primarily in the utility funds, but those savings do exist. There was some savings in parks for a period of time. But you're talking months, so it's not going to be a big impact on the general fund, but there are some there.
But, but it, but it'll have an impact on the utility funds, right? But but it but it'll have an impact on the utility funds, right?
Yes.
Yeah, got it.
And and we do have the preliminary numbers. Of the, we had them look at those utility numbers. Um, the only utility that looks like it needs to be adjusted is sewer. Water is okay. Okay, so they are working that up. Supposed to have it in a couple of days. You should have it next week. Or, well, that F and A.
Yeah.
Councilor Johnson?
I am uh wondering if uh we've. Put it to uh the voters that um. That they have options as well to help us out. And if we're talking that uh looking at the numbers here, it's uh it's police. That we're to be talking about cutting, um, I wonder if the voters would give us another option.
Councilman Mayhew?
Couldn't agree more, Councilmember Johnson. I think we have to. Put this to the. Voters. Here's the deal. The voters don't get to tell us a different option if we never ask them. We've got to put it on a ballot and let and explain it to them and let them decide. So the thing is. We we haven't started moving in that direction. We've talked about it. We're not, it's not happening, so we got to get going on this. Because we're signing the contracts in half an hour, but. You know, getting not really half an hour. But uh, very soon. And it takes a long time to get something on a ballot. And for the voters to understand, they're going to need time to digest this and really think about what they want in their community. And what the cost is for that. I mean, we talked earlier about. A one percent increase, actually point. Eight, nine percent. Holloway thinks it's eight point nine percent, but it's a point eight, nine percent. Uh. Everyone in the city knows that our cost didn't go up point eight, nine percent, for heaven's sakes. Um, everybody goes to the grocery store just like I do. I wish it was only point eight, nine percent, so. Everyone knows that we're getting squeezed here. We've got to start that conversation and we've got to get in front of the. But because here's my point, if we don't get in front of the voters, then we better cut the costs.
Councilor Washington?
So following the logic of um Councilmember Mayhew and Councilmember Johnson. Seemingly, it would be logical to have a plan in place, um. Because we have to get from point A to point B. Would be my logic. So if we have something on the ballot, it's going to take time for that process. To get there, no matter what the answer is. How do we get from point A to point B?
So I believe we are bringing revenue options. Is that correct?
We are next week.
You have an A next week. Anything else?
I'll just point out one thing. This forecast that we're looking at is just the general fund. And not all the teamsters are in the general fund, so I I share your concerns with needing more revenue and cutting costs, but um teamsters will be spread throughout the city, not just on this spreadsheet.
Yeah, and and into utility funds, a lot of those concerns, yeah.
Alright, thank you. No further continued discussion again in a couple of weeks. Okay, next item up is community reports. Is there any report from Public Safety Committee?
Um, just that um the police are making significant progress in terms of getting hired up. Uh, there were six vacancies open previously in June and I think all but one of them are full at this time. In addition, we received an update on. Fees for these Quan Municipal Court, which is raising fees, but it should not have an impact uh in the near future.
Thank you. How about Community Development Report?
No report this week.
Right, is there a report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
Not this week, no.
Okay, and then Finance Administration, so AB twenty-three dash one two eight. Adopting the proposed staffing plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennium. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
Administration is seeking to update amend the adopted staffing table for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial budget. Administration is proposing several changes ranging from title changes to freezing positions, removing positions. And adding positions which will result in a net salary savings of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars during the remaining of the biennium. Move to adopt resolution sixteen seventy-three, adopting the proposed staffing plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennium. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by. Councilor Benson?
Was not me. I didn't understand this one.
No, Councilman Mayhew. Voices sound similar, okay. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Not seeing one in chambers or online. Okay. So we have our um. City Minister Mike Chambles, you want to introduce this?
Sure, um. A lot of this is cleanup, some of this is some initial moves that that. We're looking to make to make us more sustainable, make us more flexible, make us more dynamic, um etcetera. Um, to address the elephant in the room. Uh, the mental health professional requested that title change.
Okay, alright, good.
So it it does nothing to prevent her from from executing her duties. It, we were, we were kind of at the leading forefront of that and the title it was given is not what the industry caught up and adopted, so. As you go through, uh when we passed the budget. In twenty twenty-two for this biennium. We anticipated a lot of development, um activities at the mill site, etcetera. Those have not come to fruition. As a result, um, we've had maintained for a good period of time vacancies in the planning. Department. Um, and uh. While there is. Work to be done. Um, current staff along with with supplemental uh co-contracts at times. Um, is handling the workload, so we are proposing to eliminate three planning positions in there for the remainder of the biennium. Um, you know, if something changes in the in the development outlook, then we will. We will assess that change at that time. And and come forward. Another change we're recommending is to eliminate the Assistant City Attorney position, which is currently vacant. And retitle that to an HR manager position, um and separate HR from the finance. Um, Director position, so the Finance Director is worried about finance. The HR manager will will be concerned with the HR and they will be reporting to the City Administrator's Office. The other. Title change is the currently we have a legal assistant slash Deputy City Clerk. Um, that caused some confusion with that title, so we want to flip it. To Deputy City Clerk slash Legal Assistant, so it's clear what their primary role responsibility is. We are looking to recruit for City Attorney beginning in January of twenty twenty-four. When the new City Attorney comes in, it would be more appropriate for them. To decide how they want to put their team together, so we are including support at this time and as we go through the budget process. For next biennium, we will assess the the needs and and address those at the at that time. Um. The only other kind of funky one in there is the Police Department. We are recommending um for staff equity um and flexibility. To retitle one of the records technicians to an administrative support position. So they would have two administrative specialists and one records technician. Um, that allows a little more flexibility and higher level work in in our office. And um it has the support of staff and the chief for that. Any specific questions on any of this or?
Councilman Watten?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I applaud. The idea of having an HR manager, uh is something that I've wanted for some time. See from the administration, I think it's a great move. My concern. Just to make sure that all the pieces are in the right place and that's in community development. Um, that is quite a dynamic shift. My concern is we really don't have someone designated. To do the other side of community development, which is economic development piece. Um. In our mix in some cities and and granted, we're not a huge city. But I I'm just kind of. Wanting the administration's perspective on how. That will still be handled while at the same time not slowing down things like. The processing of permits that. Doesn't impact the city necessarily, but those that want. A permit approved in a very efficient manner. Is that succinct enough?
Yes. So my, one of my mentors as I was growing through my career. Um, he he always said. Every member of the city from the council down to the person uh mowing the lawns. At the park is responsible for economic development. And we we had desert dedicated personnel over. A period of years. In that particular situation, three different. Um, and the number of projects that they brought into the city. Was zero. But. City employees. It throughout the system. Brought in about fourteen. So. I I'd love to have a more focused conversation with you on that. But. I I'm not sure, especially with Councilmate, persons Mayhew's concerns that I share also with the upcoming. Uh, lines crossing that we can afford a dedicated economic development position at this time. I think as I work through the system and look at. Uh, job duties and job descriptions and improve those. Maybe there are job, job duties that we already have that could be a little more focused towards. Economic development and maybe we can meet that need there. With the appropriate compensation.
Councilman Mayhew?
So um. Uh, just three things I want to mention. First. Um, I think Councilmember Benson's comment earlier about. His concern about not overworking our staff. This is the agenda bill he meant to be making that comment on and I I share his concern, especially as I think about. As I worry, as I just shared with you all, as I worry about how we're going to have to respond to increasing wages. And um I I only worry about that getting worse, but at F and A, we had a very. Um, extensive conversation about all these changes. I think a lot of thought and effort um has gone into this and I I think. Um, I do support. What's being proposed here, but. Um. I I just want to speak a bit more about what Councilmember Watten was speaking about. So I just want to say I am worried about the overworked staff. Both just from this as well as. What's going to happen next? I think administration is worried about it also, and I think they're very much focused on that and what they're doing here and trying to make some of these shifts. That was number one. Number two, one of the big things that we did talk about. We haven't talked about for a while at this council, but this is a big deal. It costs us a lot of money. Is public records requests. The amount of effort that our staff has to spend on this is. Absolutely enormous. You look at this, we have a total. Of a hundred and. Hundred and thirteen employees, hundred and twelve point seven five employee. FTEs. And the number of those that are involved. In significantly involved in answering public records requests is large. Don't get me wrong, this is a vital function of government. Right? We must communicate with the public. But it is enormously expensive and it is so. Um. Hard for us to come to grips with that, with all the needs that we have. To notwithstanding that, to find money to carve out. The in significant amount of money. At at one point, we were told that as much as. Close to five FTEs were spending their time on public records requests, as that was, you know, a few years ago, I don't know where. But but I don't know where we're at today, but I do know from our discussion F and A that it is significant. So I know this is something that puts a huge pressure on. The administrative staff and they're struggling with how to deal with, um. And I I just wanted to emphasize. So make sure just bring that discussion back to council that we need to be aware of that. It's it's just a big thing. Um, I I think. I think administration is somewhat reluctant to bring it up because they don't want to be perceived as somehow. Not being open to the public, of course we are. But there is a cost and we do need to grapple with that, so I just wanted to mention that. But then my third and final comment is, I um. Completely agree with Councilmember Watten's focus on economic development. Um, look, Director Arteche. This is no. No criticism of you. I I'm amazed at how much you get done each day. Um, you've got this enormous, as you should, comp plan focus. We've got a deadline that's screaming at us like a oncoming train. Um, just an enormous amount of work, but you know, there's only so much you can do in a day. I think these planner positions that we're cutting. Um, I look back a few years ago and I think about, when I think about economic development, yes, it's true, some of the projects we do. I I think we heard from the Arts Commission earlier tonight about wine walks and things like that. Those matter. Those help. But by the way, when I think about. Economic development, I don't think about. Sales taxes or V and O taxes. I think about. Our businesses succeeding. And I think about how hard it is, especially for our downtown, and and all our businesses in Snoqualmie to succeed in the shoulder seasons in particular. So we do some great things, for example, around the December holidays to bring in a lot of people. That helps a lot of businesses. Uh, but, you know, January, February and March get pretty tough, so. Uh, some of the big things that we've been working on over the last decade or more. Um, revitalizing downtown, we put millions of dollars into the boardwalk and all kinds of planning and what we're trying to do there. We had um a big focus on the Riverwalk project as a way to. Drive more people to Snoqualmie. I don't know if that's the answer. It's it certainly has been an answer that we focused on. Um, all of that stuff, there's only so much we can do on our own. These planners are also people that apply for grants. There are cities our size, not many, but some. That bring in millions of dollars. Every year in grants, because they've got planners that are really good at applying for these grants and they just keep them rolling in. These. Actually pay for those planners salaries. They pay for engineer salaries and huge projects that really develop their cities. That drives big economic. Development, all kinds of other projects can happen, so. I am okay with. What we're doing right now, but I really think. If we can find a way. In future to add back these planner positions. When we had all of these fully staffed, I was talking about, we need more. So I I'd really uh think we we just, let's not walk away from big future city planning. Think about what we've talked about at this council over the last year. We really haven't talked about big. City planning ideas. Um, where where are those? Let let's try and get back to those. We got off the wagon during COVID, but anyway, I'd really like to see us those in the future, but having said that. I support this, but I really think we got to find a way in the future to add that back.
Any other comments? Okay, so move on to vote. So all those. Approved, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Right, so the staffing plan passes, thank you. Next item discussion for of the twenty or December twenty-six, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. You asked to have this added to the council of the whole.
Yeah, so we did have discussion in F and A about. It was council. Canceling this meeting at the end of the year when. We're all going to get busy. Uh, my Mediterranean trip got canceled because of large gray boats in the Mediterranean, but I'm going to be here, uh, just whining. Uh, but it's the holiday season. We have a typical, we usually. As a council, go ahead and cut off some of the December to allow. Family time and things and have the same thing, but I didn't want to take that action out of F and A without discussion. At council. Are there any objections to taking this meeting off our off our calendar and proceeding on?
Councilor Christian?
My only concern is just the amount of the sheer amount of work that we're going to need to get through, so to the extent that we are taking it off, I want to make sure that. That folks are on board with having whatever additional meetings that we're going to have to have in order to do that. That being said, I recognize. Staff has places to go. I certainly would not want to hold you up, um. That being said, I recognize staff has places to go. I certainly would not want to hold you up. Um, I, so that that would be my only concern, but I certainly don't want to put staff kind of at the last minute on that. And to the extent that we do need additional meetings going forward, the sooner that we can get those planned so that staff is able to to plan their own holidays, I would recommend that as well.
Sounds good. Councilor Benson?
Um, yeah, I uh, we're talking about the December twenty-sixth meeting. I am going to have a ton of family in town, and um I was I was really counting on this meeting.
This is recorded, you know.
Councilor Watson.
Yes, um, I I I have kind of similar concerns, but I want to honor Boxing Day, so. Well, I mean, anyway, I I would prefer it to be canceled.
Okay. Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I just have a question in uh to uh uh Councilmember Christensen's concern. If we do need an additional meeting, what's the mechanism by which we would, that that would come to to happen? Is that something that I I just want to make sure that we're not from a process perspective somehow tangled up? Is that something that F and A could do or Mayor Protim could do or Mayor could do, or how how would that mechanically?
We would coordinate, make sure, you know, I'm, we're not going to do it on Thanksgiving Day. We'll coordinate and find out who the how many we can get at wit times. It may not be satisfactory for everybody, but much as we can, if we need it, and do it. But I would assume out of F and A. I think uh
I, the, the calendar is of utmost concern to all of us, and I believe that we have everything worked out as long as deadlines are met with with um consultants, that the timing works that we ought to the big things over the next two meetings and not need that third one.
Councilor Johnson.
Uh, yeah, I recall last year, uh, there were um dark times where we had uh some uh rather heavy things we were handling all at the same time, and we ended up having to add meetings and we all survived. If we need to add another meeting for a roundtable or something to get a decent discussion, I'm sure that we'll figure it out.
Well, also.
I bet it's going to happen.
Also keep in mind, last year was the beginning of the budget.
Right.
This is a biennial, you've got got that handled. If you agree, you've got it handled in the next agenda bills in the next meeting.
So we're just.
With that, we'll take action on F and A. Go ahead and cancel the meeting for twenty-sixth.
There's a motion.
Second.
By Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councilor Johnson to cancel the December twenty-sixth city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Nay.
Right.
You can come over to my house if you really need.
Motion passes. With Councilmember Benson voting against. Okay, so the other thing, there's a um let's see, cue the third quarter finance report is in your packet, which um Jenna mentioned, our budget manager talked a little bit about it earlier, and so it's just for your reference to look at. I will go on with the mayor's report. And so first of all, I am appointing our interim police chief, Brian Lynch, to be the permanent chief of the Snoqualmie Police Department effective December first, twenty twenty-three, pending city council confirmation. Brian has been serving as interim police chief since June twenty twenty-three. Prior to that, he served as the Snoqualmie Police Captain. Since stepping forward to lead the department, I've been impressed with interim chief's Lynch's strong leadership and track record of accomplishments. He has filled multiple police officer positions, streamlined administrative processes, and boosted departments morale. So confirmation would take place at the council meeting on November twenty-seventh. So please congratulate our new police chief pending confirmation. Thank you. So little bit of business. So I received notice that the Snoqualmie Tribe has requested through the Bureau of Indian Affairs to move the Salish Lodge and Spa and other properties into reservation. So remember that they have been moved from fee to trust, and now they're actually going into reservation. So um, so this is ongoing process. Um, I also received notice today that the administrative campus parcels, which is about forty-eight acres, so the campus parcels and surrounding properties um were approved by the Bureau of Indian Affairs to to move into trust. So that is final. And I would anticipate the next step is to move that into reservation. Um, we are waiting to hear from the tribe clarifications on whether they will be paying taxes for the Salish Lodge and Properties, including the gift shop and visitor center. Estimated impact to the city is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues. Um, and the tribe in the city, we are beginning our discussions regarding the police and fire services to these properties. So that's, that is the update. And we have department reports. Please reference those that are in the packets. And then we have two executive sessions. So tonight we have executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero, one one, or one ten, one I, double I, and um to discuss legal counsel. So litigation has been specifically threatened to the agency or that's um litigation that the agency responsibly believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in a official capacity, or that may result in risks of proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion, litigation, or legal risk is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence of the agency. So the executive session would include our city attorney, David Linehan, city administrator, Mike Chambliss, and our interim chief Lynch, and that would anticipate to be about ten minutes. Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I had a question on the um Police Department report.
Okay.
Um, just uh uh hoping uh Chief Lynch could maybe comment on one, one item. Um, by the way, I um spoke with uh Chief Lynch um last week and um was extremely pleased to hear that there's been some recent enforcement activity on the Parkway, and I think um some of the speeds. You guys know I bring this up periodically. Um, some of the speeds just get astonishing. Um, but I was really pleased to that uh Chief Lynch said they've been doing some enforcement. Um, I I encouraged him to have them leave the lights on during the enforcement activity so that everyone could see that that we're doing this. Um, but anyway, uh, the question, chief, is um I see then in October, the priority three call time response uh had deteriorated a fair amount. And I'm just wondering, do you have any concerns on that, or do you see that more as, I mean, we get these blips month to month, so I don't want to overly react to it, but I just want to get, you know, any reaction from you as to whether you see that as a a a bigger concern at this point or a wait and see.
There's several uh several things that if it's a priority one, and you guys get jacked up and they're sort of excited to get there, some of the times they don't remember to put themselves on scene. So that has happened, and which throws off the the timing. You can't go back and and recreate time. Um, under these circumstances for the for the month of October, I believe this was only a one-off incident that um that we ended up having an extended period of time to respond to this on the other side. We were all the way to the other side of the jurisdiction, the time to get over there. Um, it doesn't take very much to, when we're talking about this small enough time, to throw the numbers out of whack. But I'm not concerned that this would would be a new trend where we're raising the response.
Thanks, chief. And hey, city of Seattle, six minutes. Take a look at that.
Right. Mayor Protim Holloway.
Will you be bringing an agenda bill next council for the confirmation of police chief?
Yes.
Okay, I.
Yeah, November twenty-seventh.
You know, we probably shouldn't commit to him. We're going to do it before we do that commitment, but okay.
I said pending confirmation. We talked about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I will read in the next executive session. Um, those attending, let's see, executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one ten, one B to discuss legal counsel. Um, consider the consideration of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased pricing lasting approximately probably twenty minutes. Those attending would include city attorney David Linehan and city administrator Mike Chambliss. And you know, actions anticipated following conclusion of the closed session. So the council will adjourn directly from the council session and not return to open session. So the city clerk will be informed of the concluding time for the closed session, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So we could take a five-minute break. And so we should anticipate that we would be complete with our executive sessions by probably nine thirty-five. So. Repetitive.
To do while we still have the attorney uh in open session, I want to make one clarification. When four of us show up at Councilmember Benson's house for Christmas party, uh, as long as we're not talking city business, that's so, that's okay. If we have intent to talk city business, we need to recognize that as an open forum, open meeting and notice it correctly.
That's correct. As long as you're not discussing any city business, uh, maintain appearances, uh. You keep the conversation to family and friends in the spirit of the holidays and nothing to do with your role in the cities or otherwise, yes.
All Benson never discussed city business.
There's city business? Thank you.
Right, any comments before we go into executive session? Alright. So we will be let's take a five-minute break, and then we will have it actually right here.